Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Anacortes City Council Meeting of July 22nd, 2024. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Franciaci, take the role, please.
Mr. Fantini.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Kalila McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougal. Ms. Hubick.
Here.
Thank you.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
I move to excuse Councilmember McDougal from tonight's meeting as he's on a work trip.
Second.
Okay, motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Ms. Hubick to excuse Mr. McDougal. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, it's great to see so many of you folks here tonight as we, you can enjoy the wonderful Fourth of July slideshow. But I've got a couple announcements, very few, because we have a full agenda tonight. But a reminder, there is no City Council meeting next Monday. It's our fifth Monday of the month, so July 29th, no City Council meeting. Just a heads up, the Gwimis Ferry Parking Lot will be closed July 30th to the 31st. So that parking lot located on 6 and K Avenue will be closed Tuesday, July 30th for landscaping maintenance. No parking be allowed in the lot during this time. Please have all vehicles removed by 11:59 PM on Monday, July 29th. It'll reopen on Thursday, the 1st. And got a great letter from the Department of Ecology, which you don't always get those, but it came in dated the 17th of July. I won't read the whole thing, but the highlights. "Anacortes wastewater treatment plant is receiving the 2023 Wastewater Treatment Plant Outstanding Performance Award." So turning wastewater into water clean enough to discharge in the waterways takes efficient process, control skill, teamwork, and good judgment. This is the third consecutive year the Anacortes wastewater treatment plant has received this award. And so hats off to those folks. There'll be a plaque, I'm sure, coming in the coming weeks to properly acknowledge those folks. But again, great work they do behind the scenes. So that's all the announcements that I have. So we're on to council announcements and committee reports. So Housing, Affordability, and Community Services Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
The Housing, Affordability, and Community Services Committee met last week, and the Planning Committee, which is next on the agenda, met just before this meeting. We spent both of those meetings reviewing the list of measures in our Housing Action Plan for the purpose of communicating to council what we think should move forward into the Comprehensive Plan Update. And that's all we did.
Okay, any questions?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
I know one of the purposes of sending that to the Planning Committee was to find out what the recommendations would be. Do you know when we might have that?
Mr. Walters.
Probably next week.
Thank you.
All right, next up, did that cover the Planning Committee also? Or is there any other, okay, okay. So Housing, Affordability, and Planning Committee. Next up, Economic Development Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
Thank you. The Economic Development Committee met on July 16th, and part of it was the finalization and review of our agreement with Western Washington University's Economic Development Center. And as I've said to you many times before, there is a great benefit that comes with 16 PhD students that can help us research the underlying issues that we face as a city. Those positives, negatives, or things that we may want. And so, you know, part of that was we needed to form an agreement, and so we have. And, you know, sometimes that can be a litigious process by which the lawyers for Western Washington and then our own have to review it to make sure that there are no glaring holes or mistakes made inadvertently. But what came out of it, we had a discussion with the Director of that department on last week, the 16th, I do believe. And what came out of it was the movement forward. So on this coming Friday, we've invited just a few of the stakeholders to an initial meeting to begin to understand what their issues are. Everybody's got an issue. The hospital's got its own unique set of issues that is facing the things that it needs to do in order to move forward. Its hopes for how we, as a city, and a collection of many, can help it. And the same thing goes with the hospital. Same thing goes with the chamber. Same thing goes with the port. Same thing goes with any of the stakeholders. It will be follow-up meetings with additional stakeholders, I think, two weeks after that. Am I correct, Ms. Hubick? But yeah, so we are just sort of starting out in small groups, asking for now three questions. And those three questions will allow them to give three answers for each of them. And then what we're going to do is, once we meet through with some of the stakeholders, we're going to compile it and review it and see what we're finding. There may be a common thread, maybe not. But what we're hoping to ascertain out of it is a path forward that we, as a city of wonderful people, can rally around and try to bring forward some progress and also grab the low-hanging fruit. So it's a lot going into it, lots of examples of issues that we want to begin to address. There'll be more forthcoming, but again, the reason why we are announcing now is that we've finally gotten the traction that we needed with the agreement in place that allows us to begin the search for what are we doing. One example could be, why are people leaving the island to go shopping? Why do they leave the island? And, you know, and we can, we all have ideas as to why that might be. But, you know, can you imagine if we were to find out for sure? And then we can also report that back to you and how we're going about trying to begin to address that. The Economic Development Committee's function is to really look at Anacortes and how it works into the greater cog of Skagit County, state, and federal, but also just really focusing on what we need here, or what we'd like to see, and how do we get there. So I'm excited about the progress. Of course, Ms. Hubick and Mr. McDougal, as well as the staff, we're excited about where we're going, and we will keep you informed as things continue to develop positively. Thank you.
Any questions for Economic Development Committee? Okay, next up is Library Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
The Library Committee met last week. It was myself, Councilmember McDougal, and Library Director Jeff Vogel. A couple of highlights, summer reading has kicked off. They have over 1,200 reading logs already going out. They did a partnership with the students in the, or with the school district to really reach a lot of students there and before they went to break for summer. And over 500 logs were also handed out at the library and at various events there for youth and teens as well. Everybody's engaged in reading, including adults. Over 150 adults have signed up for summer reading as well. And there's also adult programming to go along with that, including trivia and crafts. You can read more about that on the library's calendar. Also, the first couple summer reading programs that they did have were attended by hundreds of people. And a super huge thank you to the Anacortes Fire Department for stepping in at the last minute and saving the day after the Reptile Man had to cancel. They were able to get some of the firefighters over there. And who doesn't love a firefighter and a fire truck, right? Especially if you're a, you're a kid. And so they were able to really step in and save the day, so wanted to thank them as well. Couple areas of note, the teen area renovation, which I talked about last time. They're continuing to move forward with that renovation. The last draft of the invitation to bid is being reviewed by, right now, by legal. Hopefully it'll go out sometime in the next couple of weeks, and then an MOA will be coming before the council, and that'll be between the city and the Library Foundation. And the Library Foundation is planning to fund the entire renovation, provided it comes in at the right budget. Project came out of the library's last strategic plan, which is great. The community wanted to create a teen space where teens can collaborate. There's also going to be a maker's space there with technology and crafts to support school projects that may be happening in their hobbies. And the teen area plans are fully engineered and have been permitted. And the Library Foundation is really excited to kind of see the project all the way through to completion. Also of note, Skagit Library Consortium. So the library is working with other Skagit libraries in the area on a consortium agreement to create more of a collaboration between the libraries. So our legal department here has reviewed the consortium agreement, and they're going to continue to work out the details before bringing it to all of us for full council. The ultimate goal of the consortium is to have a shared library catalog system with all the Skagit libraries and transport materials between libraries to help provide even more access to materials for Anacortes residents. Last couple of things, just to point out, make sure you check out the Menary Library Jazz Grant-funded stage at the Arts Festival. That's going to be happening in the beginning of August. There's going to be performances from a lot of incredible jazz acts, local and all over Washington State. And of course, there's a lot going on in August. I will spare going through this piece by piece, but you can sign up for the library newsletter and find out all about it. So I'd encourage you to do that. There's a lot of exciting things going on there. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Any questions for Library Committee? And thank you, everyone, for your patience with the Reptile Man. If that cancels, that can cause a stir, so I appreciate everybody's understanding. I promise I did not cancel the Reptile Man. Okay, next up is Item 3E. This is Fourth of July Parade Awards. And again, as you're enjoying the pictures, I think the secret's already out, who the winners are, but we'll do some presentations real quick here. And this reminds me to thank Sylvia one more time. I appreciate you organizing it. And the pictures wouldn't, wouldn't be here without the participants. So thank you all for signing up, and we'll start with Best Float. And there was a tie for third place, so VSC Fence Display. Any chance of VSC reps here? And sorry to say, the envelopes are not filled with $50 bills, but wonderful ribbons to acknowledge your achievement. Also tied for third place Best Float, the AAU W Merman of Anacortes. Any Merman here? Okay, yeah, we can clap at this one. For the later stuff, we have to. All right, second place Best Float, Sailor Sea School. Do we have a rep from the Sailor Sea School? All right, okay. And then in first place, and yes, they've reminded me, it's a three-peat. It's the Anacortes Rotary Best Float. And yeah, having the, a live band, that was tough. All right. Oh, yeah, the all-important. Okay, for the Best Marching Group, third place, Anacortes Twisted Pixies. I think I see some, some right here. So thank you for always making the parade fun. That's quite all. I'm fine. Thank you so much. All right. And you'll get to say that. All right, second place Best Marching Group, Oars. Oars, anybody? Oh, hey, there we go. All right, yeah, that was an excellent routine. And we'll try to do this properly. All right, and first place Best Marching Group, Skagit Latin Horses. All right. Well, I don't think a horse would have fit in City Hall, anyway. Okay, well, thank you very much, and thanks for such a great parade. All right, next, next on the agenda is Item 4, which is, oh, any other announcements or committee reports council may have missed? Okay, and if you're going to stay around for the long haul, next up is Public Comment. This is an opportunity for every member of the public to wish to address the council on anything that is not on our agenda. And I do have a few of you, thank you for signing up in advance. I've got one, two, three, three folks that signed up under the comp plan. So when we have that public hearing, we're going to do that right after the consent agenda, so that'll be your time, so I'm not skipping over you. But I do have a folk, a couple folks signed up for, I think, general comments. And first up is Pat Gardner, and the topic is miscellaneous buildings and zoning. So I'm counting on that not being in direct, on the comp plan docketting. And name and city, of course, thank you.
Pat Gardner, Anacortes. Good evening, Mayor, council members. A few things of, I'm covering a few things. First of all, I was at the Port Commission meeting the other evening, and my question to you and also the port is the zoning. I went down there about 9:30 the other evening, maybe it was the evening after that meeting or the next night, and just stood on the corner. There is heavy trucks, there's traffic, there's a humming from the industry, which, all that supports our community. I'm not against, I think the port's wonderful and it supports us. But it make, there is noise down there, and how could you have, I don't, I don't know the proper word, but I call it workforce or affordable housing upstairs, people that might want to live down there? I don't think I personally would want to listen to humming all night long, trucks coming and going, traffic. Parking is all, as we all know, is a necessity in this town. And so I don't know about the zoning, but that should be zoned not to be lived in, personally. That's my opinion. Another question is the development, MJB, along Q Avenue. Looking at the paperwork I pulled up to this afternoon. Driving along Q Avenue, you look off to the east. You see the beautiful mountains, the bay, and, and marinas, and all the nature has to offer. Eventually, we're not going to have that view. And looking at some of the buildings that were in the, on your website or on the building information, we're going to miss it all, and it's going to take away the destination town that we have for tourists that bring in their money. Another, sorry, another, I'm holding on here. Winter activities, I mentioned this months ago. We don't have much for winter activities. We got rid of the bowling alley, the theater may go, what's going on? There isn't much around for the evening entertainment for families. Maybe MJB could put in something, a bowling alley, indoor pickleball, I don't know. But there needs to be some indoor activities, because it is, you know, chilly, as we all know. We've got enough outdoor for the summer, but something for the indoor. Anyway, I, I'm curious to know, what is the zoning down there on the port area? Does anybody, can anybody tell me tonight?
So we do have a big zoning map up on, up on the wall here in City, City Hall, and that.
But the height, height zoning, commercial, non?
I, I'm reluctant to answer any quotes out of the zoning in case I get it wrong, whether it's 35 feet, or 50 feet, or 65 feet, those kind of things. But we have, we'll have that information.
Okay, I'll respect that. Okay, I'll go to the office and up there and talk to them.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I do have Rick Eggers, but I have, you've got a comp plan update, so I'll wait till we get to the public hearing on that. But next, I have Steve Anderson, who wants to talk to the council about parks.
Steve Anderson, Anacortes. Thank you very much for allowing to address the council. I actually changed my topic to forest lands. So I do see Department Ecology, A Avenue Landfill Site. Okay, that's done, we're going to cover that. I have two things. One is there's a bridge that has been marked. Do not have horses on there, because a bridge needs to be replaced. Been a couple of months. Parks, we're not going to get that done. Second thing is the Earthen Dam that's near, I think it's Whistle Lake. It's on a trail. I think they marked it as, they're not going to do trail maintenance because of this Earthen Dam, and I think that's been a year or two. I'm curious as to the status of this Earthen Dam that's way back there. I know where it is, been there many times. No answer here, but that's just to my comments.
Well, I think I can help you with the, the Whistle Lake one, since we have some beaver, some beaver activity, and we're in the process of studying, of studying the viability of that particular dam. So we are, we are aware of the issues up at Whistle Lake.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
I think it's okay for me to say that that bridge has been completed up at Little Cranberry, the one that the horses weren't, I was just there, yep.
Okay, next, so I have Kathleen Lawrence Flanagan, but that's a comp plan docketting. So again, I'll call on you for the, as we do the public hearing, and also Robert Miller. But is there anybody else that wants to address the council that's anything not on our agenda tonight? Okay, we will move on to our consent agenda, Items 5, A, B, and C, council. That was simultaneous. Ms. Hubick.
Thank you. Make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items A, B, and C.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Hubick, a second by Mr. Young to approve Consent Agenda Items A through C. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, now we're on to a public hearing, Item 6A. This is the 2025 Comprehensive Plan Update Docket. And this is a discussion with possible action. As council knows, there's a resolution in the package, but this is a docketing, determine what we're going to docket, what the council's going to docket. And probably keep talking to get Mr. Coleman time to get his presentation together, but I don't really have anything else to, I can stall on Mr. Coleman. So Mr. Coleman will be presenting to this item. And then again, I will call those who have signed up and anybody else that wants to comment. So, Mr. Coleman.
Good evening, council, mayor. Thank you. I'm John Coleman, the Director of the Planning, Community, and Economic Development Department. Tonight, we're having a public hearing on the proposed docket items. Last Monday, we had a four-hour work session on the proposed docket items and had a lot of discussion about what those docket items are. So we're not going to go into detail about what each of those docket items are. What we're hoping to do tonight is work with the council. After you've already heard a lot of the information, we're going to have a public hearing tonight. There's lots of information on the website. There's a lot of material included in our, in the agenda packet today. And then, of course, there's a lot of similar information in the July 15th work session materials. So what's presented to you is, for consideration tonight, is a resolution, and it's a little confusing the way it's done. So I wanted to explain to everybody why it's done the way it is and what we're looking to do. So after our application period, we received several petitions. So in Appendix B to that resolution, there's all of the requested amendments to the Comprehensive Plan and the Development Regulations. And they're listed out in there for your ease to understand. So you could go down that list and see what is avail, what is, each of those are. And I'm going to bring that up here shortly after the public hearing portion of this, while we do the discussion, so you can go through. Now, Appendix B is meant to be a list that you can go through and choose to include, exclude, or defer from the 2025 docketting. And then Appendix A is where we'll put the ones that we include. And the reason we're doing that is, we'll put it into Appendix A, then they'll be sequentially numbered and understandable as we're working on the docket later. Because what the, what it means to docket these items means that we're moving them forward for further study. The ones that are not docketed, we're not, the city's not going to be taking up and doing further study on. So tonight, we're not passing any judgment on the merits of anything or saying that they're passed. All we're going to do is move them forward for the Planning Commission to study in depth and then make a recommendation to the City Council eventually as to what they, what they think of each of those docketed items. At the work session last week, the planning, the, the, the City Council did ask some questions of various petitioners. You can see in the tonight's agenda information that the written information has been provided to address the questions that the council provided.
Just, I was noticing out in the audience, some people was putting their hands on their ears, so I wasn't sure if the volume was enough in my missing something. Okay.
All right, that microphone always has to be pretty close. Thank you.
All right. So those petitioners did submit additional information, and that is in your packets. Tonight, what we're going to do is have the public hearing. We're not, we're not, I don't think that we're going to be providing any additional time for any of the petitioners. That's the way I understood this was going to work. And they'll just be, if any of the petitioners have additional information, they'll provide that during the three-minute public comment period. And so unless there's any additional questions or any background information that you'd like me to provide, I'm, I can step aside and open up, let you ask me any questions before we get into the public hearing part and hear from the public.
All right, and so, thank you. And I know it'll be kind of wonky to work through this, but eventually, the council, I know, needs to get to the include, exclude, or defer these items. And so if we try to refer to them by their numbers, I realize some of the, the numbers kind of match, so we'll have to just keep that in mind, council, as you're, as you're moving through that. But we are going, Mr. Fantini.
Sorry, just for clarification, so our options are to include, exclude, or defer. Can you tell me, if we're going to defer something, what that means? Is it just get tabled, or?
Mr. Coleman.
So what that would mean is to defer it to a future Comprehensive Plan Update Review Cycle. So because the 2024 and the 2025 are all more or less happening at once, we've combined them. That would be deferred until the 2026 Comprehensive Plan Update Cycle. So that would be after we complete this major periodic update. Also, want to point out, we're not intending for the council to pass a resolution tonight. We wanted to build that Appendix A and then make sure that everything's written correctly, technically accurate for the resolution. And we would bring that back to the council at their next meeting, which is the first Monday in August. And if it's okay with the, with the council, we were under the impression that Consent Agenda would be the appropriate means to bring that.
Okay, well, with that, again, council, start thinking about how we can get some of these docketed, because it'll be a little challenging with the numbers. But first, public who has signed up. This is a public comment period, and Rick Eggers. Sorry if I mispronounced that, but you signed up first for a comp plan update. And if you could say your name and city one more time for the.
Before I do that, I have some written comments that I'm going to read you into the record, but I have a copy that I'm not sure who gets. Rick Eggers, from Bellingham. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am the co-chair of the Mount Baker Group of Sierra Club, the largest grassroots environmental protection organization in the U.S. The Mount Baker Group includes Watcom, San Juan, and Skagit Counties, with 851 members and supporters in Skagit County and 303 in Anacortes. I speak regarding the March Point Refinery operations and the Anacortes Comp Plan Update. I speak regarding the March Point refinery operations and the Anacortes Comp Plan Update. Sierra Club supports Evergreen Island's July 5 comment letter to the Anacortes Planning and Development Department. Pages four and five of that letter address March Point and the uncertain future for the two refineries there. Volatile oil and gas markets, multiple changes in ownership in the last 26 years, and the push towards cleaner fuels create pressure and interest on these facilities to change products and/or expand production. In the next few years, what will these refineries be producing? Who will own them? What will the financial resources of the owners be to clean up and compensate for polluting events, especially potentially catastrophic spills in Puget Sound? Other Washington jurisdictions, including Watcom County, King County, Tacoma, and Vancouver, passed landmark and forward-thinking legislation that reasonably, reasonably limits new fossil fuel operations and establishes improved environmental review and public processes for permitting existing operations. Indeed, the Watcom County legislation change, legislative changes were reached through a process by which all stakeholders at Cherry Point agreed to the new protections. But March Point currently has no such protections. As other jurisdictions enact limitations, March Point may become more attractive due to lesser environmental protections. This concern is not baseless, baseless hypothecation. It is reasonable and necessary forward-thinking that governments all too often fail to undertake. But now is the opportunity for Anacortes to think ahead and proactively address legitimate concerns. The petroleum industry is not without its hazards. Refineries can be unpredictable. As you all know, seven lives were lost in 2010 due to an accident at the then Tesoro refinery. In my previous life as an attorney that litigated against the industry, the oil industry, for nearly a decade, I became all too familiar with the reality of refinery operations, leading to harmful and injurious pollution, especially refineries on the water. Anacortes needs to look ahead and improve its comp plan update with the amendments described in the Evergreen Islands letter. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, we have Kathleen Lawrence Flanagan, comp plan docketing comments.
Good evening. I live here in Anacortes. Oh, my name Kathleen Lawrence Flanagan. So, my comments are about this whole process of these petitions for dockets. I just, I have to say, it was really overwhelming to pull up the agenda packet and see over 650 pages that needed to be read. And there were a lot of important issues in that packet. The cinema, the vacation, this item. So, I'm a little confused by what was just said. It sounded to me, Mr. Fantini, like you were saying, tonight, the purpose is to accept, reject, or, what was the other word, defer the docket items. But from the packet, it looked like those decisions were already made.
Nope, that's, that's the goal of tonight, is for council to take up these petition items that are in the packet.
So, why does it say, so one person, well, two people submitted 11 petitions. One of, one petitioner, they were all lumped together and they were all, it said at the bottom, accepted. And then the other petitioner, there were 11 docket items and only, and one of the 11 was accepted. The others were not approved.
Those are recommendations from the staff based on the municipal code.
Recommendations from the council or from the planning commission?
From the staff, staff.
Oh, 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 okay. The staff in the department, okay. Well, that was all very confusing to me. I just have to say that. Okay, and then I just will make another comment about the petitions. It seems to me that if a specific petition by a specific developer is accepted for a specific change to the comp plan to meet that developer's specific needs, it seems like that's a really slippery slope, if that's where we're headed, to do such specific amendments to the comp plan. And I'm not going to mention names, but. Then I want to say also that there was, there was an, some of the petitions, there was a list of the six criteria that were considered. That was so helpful, because then it explained why they were recommended or not recommended. And I wish that all of them had that on it, but they didn't. So, one final comment, I just wonder where the city and/or MJB are with the response to public comments about their permit applications that were made over a year ago. I, maybe they have been published. I haven't seen anything. So, I'm just wondering where that process is. And then finally, I just want to say, this is a huge process, and I applaud you for reading 657 pages or whatever it was. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, for the comp plan comments, I've got a Robert Miller.
Robert Miller, Anacortes. Mister mayor and old great and wise council, thank you for this opportunity. It seems like there's a lot of people that are very well-prepared for this evening. I'm not. So, I live in Anacortes. We moved here about six years ago. I'd like to continue to live in Anacortes. And what has caught our eye is the potential for maybe moving into the MJB development in a condo, maybe downsizing as we get into our 120s or so in age. One of the things that we have noticed over time is that this process of approval for this project seems to have taken quite a bit of time. And in fact, things that were affordable perhaps a few years ago, or a couple of years ago when this started, as time goes on, will stop being affordable. Things appreciate in cost and in value. So, an $800,000 condominium maybe would go to 880 if it's delayed a year, and maybe it's nine, 960,000 as time goes on. Maybe it's up over a million if it takes three years to get through the process. I would like the council to be conscious of the fact that as projects come into the pipeline, they start to increase in cost. And the longer it takes to get through the process, the less affordable that they are for people like me who would like to stay in Anacortes. So, again, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I've also had a little difficulty navigating where we are with that project. Are we waiting for the developers? The developer waiting for us? Are we all waiting for some other entity? As an architect, I'm familiar with kind of the process of some of this stuff, but it does, it's not clear to me where we are. So, any clarity that could be added would be much appreciated. We have an interest. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. So, I don't have anybody else who signed up in advance, but anybody else would like to address the council as part of this public hearing for the docketing of comp plan? Yes, come on up. And I think it might be helpful to council that if you have specific items that you're interested in docketing, that would, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Marlene Finley. I'm the president of Evergreen Islands. And as you know, we submitted a 10-page letter of comments on the Comprehensive Plan Update 2025. And I just wanted to emphasize or share two things that, this evening, that we're concerned about as we move into the comp plan. And the first thing is what Rick Eggers mentioned, and that's March Point. And I know it's kind of, it can be very confusing for people, because March Point and the refineries are in the urban growth area, not within city limits, although the county does the permitting for development actions at March Point and the UGA. They follow Anacortes' zoning and comp plan. So, that's why it's so important that the city of Anacortes address the future, that what's going to happen in the next 20 years out at March Point and be prepared and be preemptive. Right now, the current rules governing development at March Point industrial area are vague and inadequate for the 21st century. And it's important that these development regs and comp plan, and the comp plan be specific, have specific and clear expectations and processes. March Point is really vulnerable, because to the north of us, at Cherry Point, they've adopted, Watcom County's adopted development regulations, as have to the south of us, King County, Tacoma, and Vancouver. So, that leaves March Point vulnerable without having protective development code. Also, let's see. It also, without good development code, it can make for very messy processes at times. We need safeguards and we need improved public processes. The other item I wanted to mention is MJB. As many of you know, Evergreen Island staffs a table at Farmer's Market on Saturdays, and we get to hear from a lot of people in our community. And this is the number one thing that people ask about, is what's happening with MJB. We hear that property, they, we hear from people that they're really concerned that there's going to be multi-story development there, blocking views, blocking waterfront access. People are concerned about the impacts of that development on the marine environment there in Fidalgo Bay. So, I think it's really important that you scrutinize carefully whatever proposals are coming forward to be docketed for that specific property. People in Anacortes really care about MJB, the waterfront, and the character of our town. And just lastly, Evergreen Islands is going to be, continue to be very involved with the comp plan update as an advocate for a healthy, natural, and built environment. So, thanks for listening.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? Yep, come on up. And I see three hands raised, so, yeah, maybe, maybe if you want to line up, that's fine, too.
Pat Gardner, Anacortes, mayor, council members. Regarding the MJB property, we know what we, you built along, is it R, not R, Q Avenue, widening and making it look nice and everything and more accessible for the side streets. I believe that probably you did that because you knew MJB was coming in, and the traffic is going to be a lot, we're going to have a lot more traffic along our avenue. I think it's R, Q, Q Avenue, I'm sorry, getting mixed up. But Q Avenue is going to get loaded with a lot more traffic. And anybody that's, any businesses or residents along that are going to be hit by that. And we also have the trucks from the refinery to the port back and forth and vibrations and stuff, so that can be an impact, too. So, MJB better be more diligent on accommodating the community. And the community needs to put their foot down and have more control. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, a couple more I saw with hands up. Yeah, just make your way up. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. I'm Tom Glead. I'm a longtime member of Evergreen Islands. And I have found this article in the site land, it's put out this big package about the Washington refinery communities just got a transition boost. A quarter million dollar budget per viso will fund a study to map opportunities beyond oil. There are five oil refineries in Puget Sound and Pierce, Skagit, and Watcom Counties. The state lacks the roadmap to protect workers and community dependent on these facility as the region shifts off oil. That's a risky bet when experts project oil demand will peak and containers decline over decades. And from 1920 to 22 alone, seven oil refineries across the United States shut down operations without warning. These closures resulted in more than 3,400 layoffs, millions and lost local tax revenues, and polluted land without a future. So, I encourage the city to look into planning for March Point. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, come on up.
Brian Wincher, Anacortes. Good evening, council members. Thank you for allowing us to make this public comment. First of all, I'd like to reiterate what Marlene Finley said, and I would urge you all to take a good look at the comments that Evergreen Islands has made. We didn't submit a lot of comp plan changes. Rather, we wanted to make sure that you knew what we were feeling about this. And the comments that we made are things that we would like to see happen with this comp plan. I'd also like to particularly address March Point. I've been involved in a lot of comp plans, including the original Fidalgo Bay plan back in the late 90s, which also involved MJB at the time. The current Fidalgo Baywide plan needs to be the guiding principle for whatever you do on March Point, particularly because of the overlapping jurisdictions. We have the county and the city with basically an arrangement about how that is permitted and what is permitted to be done there. We can increasingly see a lower interest in the refineries at March Point by the national and international energy companies. And increasingly, we have smaller, simple, simple oil refinery folks. The, we're kind of on the way out, I think, in Anacortes with the petroleum industry, having been involved in the petroleum industry for some time. And I would hope that the council would look forward, as Watcom has, to suggest that those industrial zones that are now in refineries need to be looking for different industries. What happens when it's no longer profitable for Marathon or whoever's over there to be pumping oil out in tankers anymore? We leave an enormous economic hole in our industrial capacity. We need to be out there proactively, looking at the advanced opportunities that a community like ours has, perhaps in partnership with the port and the county, to be looking at the hydrogen possibilities for this particular site. It's being looked at nationally and internationally as an opportunity for green hydrogen to be produced, because what do you need for green hydrogen? Water and cheap power. And somebody that wants to put in the infrastructure. And we have a lot of the infrastructure existing. So, please consider the future when you're looking at this and not rely on the fossil fuel industry, which will soon be on March Point, a thing of the past. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, looking for any other public comments?
Good evening, council members. My name's Jimmy Blaze, Kirkland, Washington. I represent MJB Properties. Just want to thank you for considering all of the docketing requests that we have as part of this. As you know, we are only proposing changes to the actual development regulations, not a single comp plan actual change. And not a single one of the changes actually applies to our property alone, other than where the code limits it only to our property and the port. So, these are all general development regulations that apply to all properties across the town. This is not a site-specific request. This is not a development-specific request. It is a code cleanup request, which was supposed to be done two years or a year after these development regulations went in place. That was always the intent, as many of the council members know, that worked on that 2016 comp plan process. But here we are 10 years later, having never cleaned up the, or the development But here we are 10 years later, having never cleaned up the company or the development regulations after they went into effect. And so many of the changes that we're requesting are in order to clean up issues that we see that will preclude development or make a development that doesn't make sense. So we appreciate all the effort that's gone into it and hope that you docket the items that we've submitted following staff's request. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Looking for, yep, come on up.
My name's Eric Bowman, and I'm in Anna Cortis. And as last week, I'll keep it short, and I'm requesting that you allow indoor recreation as a permitted use in the LM1 zone. So as you pointed out earlier, that's all we get tonight. I did send something to Libby as far as PowerPoint, but I guess that won't be up tonight.
And as a reminder to the petitioners, you know, the council received, obviously, they got to hear your presentation Monday, and they received any updated information. Is there anything more that you need to provide them?
Nope, just like to be on the docket.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Anybody else? Yeah, okay, there we go. That's the public comment period and...
We have a quick, Christopher Collins with Signal Hill Family. We just have a question.
Yeah, a little closer to the microphone and...
Christopher Collins with Signal Hill Family. Are we, we're understanding we're on the docket already. Should we make comment now or wait till?
Well, my, the, again, it's up to council, but I don't think council is intending on going through each, each one of the docketed items.
Perfect. I'm glad we made that. Scott, do you want to come up?
Unless I hear from council. So you want to, you want to speak to your item then?
Well, we're, we're on, we wanted to address some questions from Councilman Fantini and Young that we submitted earlier.
Okay.
So should we wait?
Yeah, no, again, this is the time for the, because eventually I'm going to close the public hearing, the council's going to have, make a decision on, on docketing, so might as well hit it now.
Great, great. I want to thank, thank council, Mayor Miller, the public for being here. I'm representing the Signal Hill family. The Bartos have been here since 2005. I've worked with them since 2006, all their properties here in Anna Cortis. What we're proposing is, well, let me introduce, Scott, we're a three-man team. We have Scott Cameron with Land Advisors. We have Leif, who you heard from last week. He's watching online. He's in Austin right now. Hope he's got a steak and a bourbon, but he's, he's, he's there in case we need to contact him. So this is the team that we've, we've kind of put together. Just quick, we, we sold the, we, we sold the ranch proper, 172 acres. We sold that 40 acres. We retained the 132 acres, 21 parcels for development. We want it best and highest use for that, for that property. You know, we can build 10 homes, 10 large-scale homes, or given this process and this application under the UGA, we have a possibility of, you know, meeting some other goals that I think everybody is, is interested in, in meeting. So I'll, I'll turn it over to questions. We do have, we prepared the questions from Councilman Fantini and Young, pardon me, that we had last week regarding some open space and connectivity with trails, the possibility. So I won't get the death ray Jeopardy light today, so.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody else? All right. And I'm probably going to need some help from Mr. Coleman and some help from council, of course, as it's your all's decision, but as far as keeping, keeping these things in order as we move through, whether we use the numbering that's in the table, which seems pretty complicated for, you know, B7, B8, or we use the numbering that's in the packet where, for example, the UGA expansion is number one. So kind of with that, but before we turn it over to council, because that's what we, we pay the council to do, is make these decisions and docketing, and I will close the public hearing on docketing for the 2025 comprehensive plan.
Okay, so I think the direction that we received from council was we'll go through the Appendix B here, which is a list of all proposals received for consideration during the comprehensive plan development regulations. They have been broken up into individual items. So anybody, any petitioners that submitted something with multiple items, each one of those items has been separated out. We did not include on this list staff's recommendations, so I'll try to keep my recommendations handy, so if anybody, if anybody needs any help with that. So we were just going to go through this and then it was suggested that I go down the list and as you make your decision on them, I just update this form and that'll help technically for the future when we bring this back to you.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Fantini.
Sorry, just one more clarification. So this is just to put it, and if we approve, it's to move it forward for further discussion. This is not necessarily the night that we need to litigate our cases or anything like that.
Debate on the merits of these is not the objective.
Okay, thank you.
The objective is to...
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters.
Well, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't call it approval. We're choosing include, exclude, or defer for each item, which might help clarify. All we're, include in the packet that goes into the public process for the next 18 months or not.
And the way this is formatted is Councilmember Walters had submitted a, a list of items that he wanted to see, so they just randomly ended up at the head of this under comprehensive plan amendment proposals. And then we'll continue on to petitions from members of the public and non-city entities, and that includes the Cemetery Ranch expansion and Fidalgo Park. So these are the comp plan changes, and those are under B. And then we'll move on to development regulation amendments. So these are the ones that aren't, don't affect the comp plan, but affect the development regulations. And again, Councilman Walters' requests, and then under B is petitions for members of the public. And as I said, they're broken up by number, letter and number. So we'll just go down this list. It's not too terribly long, but, you know, there's probably about 30 or so to go through.
All right. Mr. Walters.
I talked about my proposed comprehensive plan amendments last week, and I am obviously supportive of moving those forward into the process. So I would move that we mark include for A1 through A10 under the comprehensive plan amendments.
Any objections with other council members? None noted, and we can, I think, move forward to the next one.
Okay, so that moves us on to the Section B petition by members of the public and non-city entities. Again, these are just the, there's five comp plan changes that are requested. So the first one is the Cemetery Ranch Signal Hill Family Limited Partnership to expand the Anna Cortis urban growth area to include approximately 132.7 acres near Sharp's Corner. This is, so again, this would be to study the issue whether or not it's, makes sense for the city to expand our urban growth area into this area.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Young.
I have a question about this. You know, I'm supportive of this, particularly, I guess, you know, to include it, but, you know, I think I would like to have a larger discussion about what else we may want to or may not want to include in our urban growth area. What I'm suggesting is that, is there a way that we can expand beyond just this 132 acres that when we have that subsequent discussion, we can decide the merits of, you know, if, you know, we want to include other properties or begin that process for consideration of other properties? I'd like for, in other words, I'd like for us to, because we're going to pass certain properties to get to this one, why not just take a look and see in this opportunity if there are other things that we want to, maybe other properties we may want to consider including? I think since we have it open and this is an opportunity, I'd like for us to consider other things.
So Mr. Coleman and I had a discuss, to refresh me on how UGA, UGA expansion works, and I think you've got to have a petitioner.
Yeah, that's probably a really good time. So, you know, if we didn't have a petition for an urban growth area expansion, but through our review process, we find that we need to expand our urban growth area to accommodate either more, the anticipated growth of residents or commercial, industrial, and we just found that we needed more land outside of our current city limits, we would do so absent the, a request from anybody. So we would be studying areas outside of our urban growth area to accommodate our growth needs. We happen to have somebody that has requested to include their property into the urban growth area, and so it makes sense as we're going through this process to determine if we need to expand urban growth area to look at this area, because we have somebody who is interested and it is adjacent to our city limits. And we've already discussed the potential for higher density residential in the area. That's what his zone, our city zone next door is. So it would also fall under our purview to study additional land beyond this. So I, that, that's staff's two cents on that question.
To be clear, do we need to docket it as well? Or I mean...
Not necessarily, just because, I mean, we're going to be studying our urban growth area boundaries and there's, yeah, that's just something that we have to do.
All right. And again, to be clear, my thought is not about, you know, the merits. I think that the opportunity is there, given that we have so much in between those that are making the request. And so, and I think that given the timelines of what we're having to work with, it's just prudent for us to consider all the options at this point that are reasonable and as a council have a discussion.
So any objections to docketing this item?
Objection.
You have an objection. Okay. Anybody else?
Would Mr. Walters elaborate on why?
Mr. Young. Mr. Walters.
This particular petition would expand the city limits into the rural South Fidalgo part of, of our island. As a general matter, I think UGA petitions are disfavored because it costs money to provide services. We will incur that obligation. We will now be having to serve another area. All of our utility plans, our transportation plan, others will have to be updated to reflect an additional area. I certainly see how it is attractive for the property owners, because they're talking about 10 houses and under a card development, they could do more, but their development potential would multiply by 10 times or so. But in their, one of their layouts, they show houses, talk about houses on one acre lots. That's not urban levels of development. That's not consistent with UGA, with GMA. It's a little bit unclear to me whether Pioneer Trails is included or not included in the petition, but I believe that Pioneer Trails is condominiumized. I, I don't understand how that is going to help advance our housing goals, but we would be obligated to provide them sewer if it's inside the urban growth area, if it's to become part of the city limits. I see some more value in bringing in, say, parcel 20014, which is right next to Highway 20, because that is adjacent to our city-owned property that is going to be developed, assumedly with higher densities. And so that might make sense because it's, it's right contiguous. It doesn't have some of the other constraints like critical areas and topography. And it could be developed consistent with the other city-owned property. But otherwise, our comp plan says accommodate growth within the city limits, do not try to expand the urban growth area. We would have to, assumedly, change that policy to make an urban growth area expansion consistent with the comp plan. And if we tell staff to go do this one, this one is, is different than the others, because staff will have to submit a petition to the county. Staff will then start having to generate justifications for expansion of the urban growth area. I was working at the county when Mr. Coleman had to submit those justifications on behalf of Sujawuli, and our planners at the county kept asking for more and more justifications because it, it can be a high hurdle, hurdle to, to meet. So I, that gets at the crux of why I don't think it makes sense for us to spend staff time on that at this point, given all the other things that we're trying to achieve. But also because I don't want to have to fight the property owners over pursuing actual urban levels of density, which would be required to make it GMA compliant. And ultimately, that's, that's what we need. If we're going to have a city, we should have a city. And GMA prescribes that. It says have a city and have urban levels of density inside the city, and then have a rural area and have much less density outside the city. And I'm afraid that this would take us away from those principles into a place that is undesirable, not cost-effective to serve, and not good for the future of Anna Cortis.
Mayor Miller, just to follow up to that...
Hold on, hold on a second. Hold on a second. Mr. Young and then Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. Again, my proposal wasn't that we include it. My proposal was that we figure out a way to take a look at it and see what are the benefits. What Mr. Walters just listed was a litany of what needs to go into the thought processes. That's naturally what we would do anyway. Only thing I'm asking for is that if we are talking about expanding beyond what we already have, why not consider everything else that we may or may not want to do beyond this meeting? That is not a, a, a leap that we should not take. I just think that every member of council here has a view that may be different than Mr. Walters about consideration. Once we put everything on the table and we decide that it costs too much, too much time, it's not going to work, it's too expensive, oh, that's great. But to have a discussion as a whole council about what's in the benefit of this city and whether or not we need to expand or not, what are the hurdles, whether it's density or any of those things, that will come out in the discussion. The only thing I'm asking is that we have an open discussion about whether or not we should include other areas. That's obviously not something Mr. Walters want, but I think that it's a fair discussion for the people of Anna Cortis. If we are already running short on land, we're trying to figure out, are we going to expand? Are we, all these questions that are coming up that we need to discuss, why not discuss it in an open fashion where we can weigh the pros and the cons? That's all I'm asking. I'm not saying exclude it. I do believe that there are costs associated with it. I get that. But what I'm saying is I want to have a discussion, and then we, as a city, look at what's in the best interest of all of us and decide the path forward.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. I would prefer to exclude this at this time unless we are finding that we do need additional land to accommodate our projected growth. And I feel that the city is not in a good financial position right now to be adding this kind of land that demands this kind of infrastructure when we have so many infrastructure needs that we are struggling to pay for, for example, the west side of town and innumerable things. So I just don't personally see this as the right time for this. I think the topography is also very challenging. I don't know that it will lead to the, I don't think that at this time that this rural area needs to be forever taken away in order to hopefully have the kind of density that we are looking for, for the housing goals that we are struggling to meet.
Miller?
Mr. Fantini.
I just have a couple of questions and then a couple of thoughts. My first question is, there's talk about we have to provide infrastructure to this area. So if we were to approve this and give them zoning and they build, is it the developer's cost to get the services out there or is it the city's cost?
It's the developer's cost.
It's the developer's cost. So the developers have to get, they pay for the, getting the services out there. So that's not a cost on the city. Really, the cost on the city is, is upkeep. Really, the cost on the city is upkeep, right?
After it's annexed, yes, and they say they build roads.
Okay.
We would be responsible for maintaining those roads.
Okay. And I think Mr. Walter, I'm of the mind to include this for a few reasons. I do think Mr. Walters makes a good part, point that there are, you know, that P20014 is right next to where we are going to be developing. So, I mean, if we're going to develop out there, I just think, you know, people come before us all the time and they talk about the density that we're putting into our city limits. And I look at the numbers for the required housing that we're going to be asked to create over the next 20 years, and I struggle with understanding how all of that is going to fit within the city, current city limits of Anacortes without drastically changing what the current city of Anacortes looks like, because that is all going to have to happen through infill, infill, infill. More cottage housing, more density, and I do believe that there is an opportunity to create more density within the city limits. But I think when we are presented with an opportunity to acquire more land, and I did not hear, I did not hear the same thing that, that other council members may have heard that this is, we're going to put 10 houses on one acre each. I heard the exact opposite from the petitioner. I heard that their goal was to help us meet our goal. I mean, obviously, you know, capitalism, everybody's going to make money, but at the same time, I think it's important to realize that we have a goal to add more dense housing. I didn't hear we're going to build, you know, Signal Hill Estates. I heard, you know, multifamily housing may go in there. I heard smaller, you know, I didn't hear the same thing. So, because we are going to be asking our community to provide all of this new housing and all of it at this point in time is going to come through infill, I think we owe it to our community to have a much bigger discussion on whether or not we should acquire this land. And again, yes, I think that there could be a cost in infrastructure upkeep, but as you said, there's not going to be that cost to, to get infrastructure out there. That's going to be at the developer's cost. And I would also say that that's going to, yes, there's a cost for maintenance, for maintaining that infrastructure, but there's also going to be a revenue that comes from additional housing, whether it's building that housing, that's going to be additional revenue for the city. Whether it's property tax, that's going to be additional revenue for the city. I mean, I don't understand, again, I am not a expert planner. We do have one, but I'm not one. But to me, I just feel like for our community, they are owed the discussion on that, so.
And just a clarification, Mr. Coleman, it would be up to council, of course, to zone that if ultimately they would, part of that discussion, should it be docketed, would be how you would zone that property. Am I off on that?
You're precisely accurate.
All right. So, I haven't heard from Ms. Cleland McGrath or Ms. Hubig. Ms. Cleland McGrath? Oh, Ms. Hubig, sorry.
Thank you. I tend to put my thoughts with including it into the docket to continue discussing it. Points are very, very well taken about maintenance and preservation, which is almost always the most expensive part of all city stuff outside of staff. Question to Mr. Coleman, at what point does the conversation stop? Do we sit up here on the dais and have a conversation and then in a month go, never mind? Or does it go as far as actually having you reach out to the county and do work that may end up being unnecessary when you could be doing something else?
So, the next step would be for us to bring this to the planning commission. We would notify the county that we're still studying it because they want our applications in by the end of this month, and I'm preparing a letter to them saying, hey, you get to work with us a little because all of our jurisdictions, we're not that far in our process to determine if we need a urban growth area expansion or not, but we're studying it, and they should be aware of that. And, you know, like I mentioned at our, their previous workshop, work session, they're also, the county's also saying that they're going to be giving some housing back to the jurisdictions, and we haven't, they haven't actually given those numbers yet. So, I feel like they need to be flexible with us to allow us some time to get them that application. But strictly speaking, it's due July 1st. We would study how many houses we could put out there. We would, I'm sure they want to know at the county level what zoning it would likely be and how we would propose to meet our, the utilities extension, like how would we do a sewer plan? We would have to do a sewer, like Councilman Walters said, we'd have to update our sewer plan. That all just takes time, so we'll need to do that through the process. And by including this entire property on, it doesn't mean that we would be committing to the whole area, but it would be studying which parcels make sense since we have a willing person. So, yes, it's a lot of work. The next steps are, you know, a lot of study to figure out, A, do our policies and our land use, our zoning regulations, do they even necessitate us to expand our urban growth area? But, you know, for example, if the council decided they wanted this to be R4 and that was a priority for them, you know, we could change our zoning in other places to show the need if that's a priority. So, there's ways to change our zoning in other places to, if you really wanted to include this area as a higher density.
And then one more question, if I could.
Yeah, please.
If, if defer was an option, how, what would the next point in time be?
2035. We can only do urban growth area expansions during our, according to the framework agreement, we can only do it during, do, in Skagit County, we can only do urban growth area expansions during the periodic update. Now, that was written when it was seven years in between periodic updates, and now we're at 10 years between periodic updates, so I don't know if things are going to change, but strictly speaking, right now, the policy of the county would be 2036, or 2035, excuse me.
So, I do appreciate the council getting to one of the key questions is, does the petition can be reasonably reviewed within the allocated staffing and budget? So, that's, that is one of the questions to answer, docketing. Ms. Cleland McGrath, you haven't spoken on this one.
Thank you. I have a, I appreciate the fact that the applicant came, they have, there's a large parcel. It is in the UGA. I can understand why it makes, it is a desirable thing to consider. So, I thank you for coming and doing this work. I guess my challenge is the fact that we have limited resources in the city and we have bandwidth, and we've got to be realistic about what our staff can process through in a timely manner. I am, I, I don't see this as being a top priority. I think that infill within our current city limits is, for the next 10 years, is where our priority should be. There is an opportunity for possibly 10 years from now at the next update, we may be at the point where we need this additional capacity. I also think though, for example, council put 20, committed $25,000 to do a Sharp's Corner subarea plan this last budget cycle. I don't think we've gotten started on that. So, I don't understand why we would consider taking 100-plus acres when we're not even sure if we like the R4 zone we attached to Sharp's Corner from 10 years ago. We haven't seen it utilized yet, and so I don't want to say it's just from this last year, but we did that R4 mixed-use zoning 10 years ago, and we've seen no, no development and not much progress. Part of that was because of COVID and, you know, kind of being shut down for a few years. But I think we're putting the cart before the horse, and I think we really need to focus on our existing properties. I have a really big concern about, yes, infrastructure, developers pay for it, but there's also all that infrastructure that they kind of pay for, but they don't, such as our wastewater treatment plan, such as just having more staff when it comes to dealing with road, like street maintenance and police officers, and how do we deal with State Route 20? What kind of, what kind of study do we need to do when it comes to additional traffic on and off that, you know, there's some roundabouts, but how does that get factored in? I just feel like we've got bigger pri, or more important priorities, and I, I feel like we would be really spinning our wheels for both planning commission, for staff, and, and for the public. I think we've got to be a little bit more direct on what needs to be done, and this is just not high on my list right now.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
I just have kind of a question on your recommendations. So, you recommended, because bandwidth keeps coming up a lot, and I certainly, from where I sit, see that there's a lot of staffing time that goes into, to a lot of this. My question would be, did you, when you are saying you recommend, because this is one you recommended to include in the docketting process.
Correct.
Is that, are these, as you recommend, including these? Like, obviously, this one probably would take a lot more time than, say, all 12, 15 of Mr. Walters put together, right? Because those are more like code type of changes, and this one is a heavier lift, would you say?
Well, I can't compare it to all of.
Sure, sure. That's not a fair comparison.
We included it because technically it meets the standards for the application, and they did address that it would need to be a comp plan change in order to change our policy about not expanding our urban growth area. So, it meets the technical standards. We are reviewing our urban growth area regardless, so that's why.
And then I guess my, my question would be, you are the planning director. Do you think you have the bandwidth to do this kind of lift?
Well, we, we are, we are examining all of our land use zoning regulations, densities, our housing needs, and determining if it fits in our urban growth area or within our current city limits and our existing urban growth area. So, we'll, we'll find out if we need to expand our urban growth area one way or another, and if we do, this would be one potential area.
And then last question. I thought Ms. Cleland McGrath brought up some great points about police, fire, wastewater treatment. Are those things looked at when you're considering this as well?
Yes.
Thank you.
Like, if, if we were to ultimately, if the city were to ultimately decide that any part of, any urban growth area expansion were to be applied for at the county level, before they approve it, they would want us to show our sewer studies, our water study, like our transportation study, how are we going to accommodate it, all of these things in the, in this new area? Now, you know, we're doing that for all of the city right now, all of the existing city, re-reviewing it based on the new data that we're, the new housing and population and employment projections to make sure that all of those systems can handle that growth.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
Just as a follow-up, I recognize the points that Mr. Walters, Ms. Cleland McGrath, and Ms. Moulton are making about, you know, just, it's a lot, it really is. But the question they're answering is not the question that I'm proposing. The question I'm proposing is a discussion. And as Mr. Coleman has already said, that we're already looking at where we want to go as a city. It's part of that process. Whether or not we choose to focus our development within committee on Sharp's Corner or any other other places, those are decisions we make as legislators for a city. I see no reason that we can't consider all options, and then those that are no longer fruitful for the vision that we have in going forward, we eliminate them. That's okay. But what I'm hearing is that we don't want to have that discussion. And what I'm also hearing is that from three members of council, we do want to add it as part of that discussion. So, if that, do I need to make a motion, Mayor, to include it? Or how does that work?
We've got, that's a great question, but I got, we got 17, 18 more of these to go.
Right.
So, yes, I think you've correctly assessed that three council members wish to include and three council members wish to exclude, but I will take a poll of the council members to make sure I've got that correct. So, maybe answer exclude or include if I, as I go down the dais.
And then how would we go forward from there if your math is correct?
Then I believe council procedures allows the chair to tie-break that vote.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I think that there is a third way here that I articulated at the beginning, and that is to go have that discussion about those westmost parcels, because the property owner's own proposal here shows one acre lots, 30 of them or so on, on the west parcels. The east parcels are the ones that I mean. That's where they propose density, that's where the land is flatter. Toward the west, where we have more topography, it would be harder to do urban levels of density. One acre lots are basically not allowed under GMA, and they are very expensive to serve compared to urban levels of density. So, what, what I would propose is that we have this conversation, to the extent that it is facilitated by the docketing process, about those eastmost parcels, the 20014 right there, 13, and 19979, the ones that have frontage on Highway 20, because those are the ones where you're actually going to get bang for your buck in terms of meeting the city's housing goals. I, I understand that the property owners would like the other parcels too, because, you know, they're going from one house per 10 acres to one house per one acre under their proposal, but that just increases our costs. There are real costs and impacts on the city's fiscal health of pursuing very low-density development, which is what one house per acre would be. So, I'd propose, and I would move that we include this proposal, limited to those three eastmost parcels.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
I just have a question. Are you talking about P20014, 20013, and 19979?
Yes.
Thanks.
Mr. Young.
Can I make an amendment to Mr. Walters?
I don't have a second to the motion, so you don't need to amend it. I'm waiting to hear if there is a second to that motion.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
Can I talk while we wait to see if there's a second? Is that, I don't know.
We can't, we cannot wait forever, but on the motion.
Sorry. So.
And I will have to say, it feels like we got into a lot of details of what could be discussed, whether it's docketed or not docketed, so.
That was kind of actually going to be.
Sorry, Mr. Fantini.
No, you're great. That was actually going to be kind of what my point is, is it sounds like we're kind of having that discussion right now, so it seems like it would merit putting it on there. And as I understand from you, we're, because this is part of the UGA, we're going to be studying more than just this little part. So, if, if we were to just put it in there with that amendment, we're still going to look at these other parcels, or no?
So, this is, this area is not part of the urban growth area. Now, they're requesting to be included in the urban growth area.
That's right.
What we'll be doing through the comp plan process is determining if we need to expand our urban growth area to accommodate our future growth and how much additional land we'll need to accommodate that future growth.
And even though in their proposal, they mentioned these one acre houses on these, the further, the further plats, that doesn't necessarily mean that's how we have to zone it?
You're correct.
So, we, we could still have it, so we shouldn't assume that we're, that that just works? We would have a discussion about the zoning?
Yes, you would have a discussion about what zoning would be appropriate for this area.
Okay, thank you.
And I hate to ask, no, I'm waiting for a second. If there is one. Ms. Hubig.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion by Mr. Walters and a second by Ms. Hubig to include this item, I'll call it B1, with, that. I'll call it B1, with, that only includes evaluating parcels 2004, 14, 13, and 9979, or 197, not, 19979, if I read that correctly, as circled. Any additional discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Young.
What's the difference between the proposal that I put forward, which would include this particular parcel? It just allows us to have an open discussion. It does include this parcel that Mr. Walters want the focus on. I just think that there's a difference between limiting a discussion to certain parcels and opening the discussion to a discovery that maybe there are other things that we've not considered in this process. It doesn't hurt us by way of timelines. When we come to the final discussion, we can decide that we only want to do on these few parcels for whatever reason. But we would have, as a council and people, had a chance to extrapolate all the pros and the cons of what and how it may matter to our city. We may not get another chance to do this until 2035. What does it hurt us to take a hard look? I just.
Mr. Coleman.
I find that unfathomable, really. Thank you.
Mr. Coleman, is this going to be the same amount of staff work? You still have got to send the same letter to the, to the county for this UGA expansion, whether or not it's the whole thing, or these three parcels? Is that, am I correct on that? It's the same process, right?
Yeah. It would, it would be about, it would be about the same amount of work, and I, either way, I would be, you know, conditioning any application that we'd be making in the next few weeks to say, we don't know exactly how much of this land is going to be, or if any, but we're, we want to keep a placeholder there.
Okay. All right. So, there's a motion by Mr. Walters and a second by Ms. Hubig to include this item with limited to those three parcels.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
The purpose of limiting the petition to these three parcels is to focus the conversation on what can actually accommodate urban levels of growth, what can actually fit inside the city. Where there's significant topography and you're not able to achieve urban levels of growth, it will, it will be difficult to actually build urban levels of growth, and that will result in one-acre ranchettes, of which we need precisely zero more in the city of Anacortes. It will create more burden on the city. And the reason that we should limit the discussion is because I've been doing this for 17 years now, and I've been through other UGA discussions with property owners, and it is very valuable to put some bookends on what it is we're talking about. And these, these parcels, apparently, without further study, could accommodate urban levels of growth. It's urban densities that we should be trying to achieve in the city, not ranchettes. And that's why we should limit the discussion.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Young.
Just as a follow-up, and, and again, I don't want any confusion. I am not disagreeing with Mr. Walters on the approach. I'm not, you know, and I understand the reasoning behind it. I recognize the expertise that you have, but you are one of seven, and each of us have a different idea as to how things could be. I prefer, having been, you know, deputy chairman for North Carolina of the Property Tax Commission and adjudicated a billion dollars a year in property tax. I get it. I do. The only thing I'm asking is that as a council, we have a discussion, an open discussion about what's in our interest. There's no reason, given what Mr. Coleman said, that the amount of work is the same thing, you know, or very similar. So, how do we lose by having an open discussion? I don't see that, and that's what I'm advocating for. And, and as a council, I just think it's prudent. We'll decide whether we want to go where, what we think is in our interest, how important it is. That's what we do as a council. That's what a council is. But, you know, again, I, I struggle a little bit with trying to limit it to certain parcels and the rest of council. At least, I've not had the privy of all of the information as to why this may or may not work. That's why I think that it needs to be a public process that we all take a look at, and then we decide. If we end up with just that, I think it's fabulous. But if not, we may discover something that we may want to do, and I think that that is the prudent thing to do, given we're already going to have this discussion.
So, did you want to amend that mo-, do you want to amend the motion, Mr. Young?
Yes, I do, to include the whole area between there and 20.
Okay, that's what I thought. And do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay. A motion by Mr. Young and a second by Mr. Fantini to include the entire area. And so, of course, we're going to have to have additional discussion and help me keep track of the amendments inside of this one. So, any additional discussion on the entire area?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Fantini.
Question. Thank you for pulling up this map. I'm not an expert, so I don't know how to read it, but I, I'd like to ask the question. When we're talking about buildable areas, and I look at this map, I see all kinds of green on there. Is that just like the forest land? Is that different? Like, can you kind of just?
Sure. So, I tried to circle. It's surprisingly difficult to make a straight line using a mouse. This is the area that was suggested by Councilman Walters, and you can see, and you can see to the west of that is a, is a power line easement through here, and then to the west of that continues to be steep slopes. And we do believe that these steep-slope areas are going to be more challenging to build anything with density. So, that's when Councilman Walters was talking about the areas to the east being flatter. You can see, these are topography lines here on the west side, and there's fewer of those topography lines on the east side, meaning it's flatter on this side than it is on the west side.
Thank you. And then, just a question. I know that you've shown this, the, the housing target numbers many times. Do we need all housing numbers, so even ones that might be on, say, single-acre lands? Do we need that housing as well?
We, so, we're, we can't accommodate sing-, one house on a single acre, per acre. That, that's not, doesn't meet our zoning density minimums. GMA requires urban areas to have urban densities, which, you know, there's some, some mixed, the number of units, like, they do allow you to go less than four units per acre in areas that are constrained by critical areas, but generally, you're, you're shooting for four units per acre or more.
Thank you.
Okay. I, I think council's pretty much had a really good discussion. We only have 18 more of these to go. So, if staff could make sure I'm correct on my Roberts rules, and we take a vote on the amended motion by Mr. Young and seconded by Fantini to include the entire area. Mr. Fant-
Mayor?
Oh, Ms. Cleland McGrath.
I'm a little confused. I thought. Excuse me. I'm a little confused, because I thought we had the original motion by Mr. Walters, which was seconded.
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
And we never did a vote for that one.
That's correct, because Mr. Young made an amendment to that motion and seconded by Mr. Fantini. So, if I remember my Roberts rules right, I have to take the amended motion first.
And then go back to the original.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted that clarity that.
But that might need some legal interpretation as we go through that, so.
Can I just say one more thing?
Yeah, sure.
I know we've had a lot of conversation. I just want to be really clear that this is our opportunity to discuss whether or not we docket something. So, I take real offense when there are references made or suggestions stated that there has been other conversations and other vetting that's happened in some kind of smaller committee work. It has not. And we received this packet and these applications at the same point in time where everyone else on council and the public received it. So, I, I just want the public to be clear about this. There were some references made last week also, and I, it is not correct.
Okay. So, we'll take up the amendment to the motion by Mr. Young and Mr. Fantini to include, to include the urban growth area. And I'm ma- making sure we're good there. We're good there. Mr. Franciac, you call for the vote, please.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
No.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
No.
Ms. Moulton?
No.
Ms. Hubig?
No.
Mr. Fantini?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Okay. Now, we'll take up the motion by Mr. Walters and a second by Ms. Hubig to include the Simichar Ranch UGA expansion, limited to the three parcels as indicated on the map in front of us. Mr. Franciac, vote, please.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
No.
Ms. Hubig?
Yes.
Mr. Fantini? Mr. Young?
No.
Motion carries.
Okay, thanks. And we will move on to Mr. Coleman. You want to go through these one by one, or whether to, if, up to council to see if they want to?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
I would move that we include B2 through B5, which are the pool amendments and the ports amendments.
Second.
All right. Motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Ms. Moulton to include B2 through B5. Additional discussion? And I think I could probably do a voice vote on this one. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. All right. Where are we now? Mr. Coleman, work our way through.
Excuse me. So, the first set of these are the ones recommended by Councilman Walters, A1 through A10.
I thought, I thought we already accepted, the council already setted those on a, on a, oh, we didn't vote on that?
Mayor.
Okay. Sorry. Mr. Coleman, and then Mr. Walters.
So, the first ones were amendments that affect the comp plan. These are amendments that affect the development regulations.
Okay. So, this is A7 through 10?
A1 through.
Dang it. I knew you'd have to help me on this one.
A10.
Okay.
And these will be renumbered in.
I know.
Everything will be renumbered when we put it into.
That's the dream.
The resolution.
Come up with a numbering solution that makes sense. Okay.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
Now that we have moved through the comp plan proposals and have arrived here at the development regulation amendment proposals, I think we need to be especially judicious in which ones we move forward, because the comp plan will be changing. The development regulations have to be consistent, so it becomes kind of a chicken and the egg type of thing. I suggested 10 different measures here, and the last three, I've proposed an ordinance that we could just take care of those by renumbering some things. So, eighth, A, eight, nine, and 10 are fairly easy to accomplish, and you'll see an ordinance in front of you soon to just do those. A7, tree preservation, is a big deal. We need to get that done. I don't think we should task the department with doing it. So, although it's my proposal, I, I think we should hold off on that, maybe call it a deferral, but not push it forward right now, given all the rest of the things the department has to do. So, that leaves A1 through 6, which are on that first page. And A3 is the Charlotte Mass program update. It's required by law. We're behind schedule by multiple years. We have to do it. I wouldn't, I, I don't think it's necessary to articulate it as a comp plan docket item, so I wouldn't try to address that. So, 1, 2, 4, 5, and 6 are the ones that I think that we ought to move forward to get done right away as part of our comp plan update. Number one is the interim, is the interim ordinance for application review time periods. That is due January 1 of 2025, well in advance of the comp plan. Number two is streamlining permit review, you know, ditches that we dig in front of Cap Santa Marina do not need all the public process and the appeals that we have, have just processed that held up the port on digging a very shallow trench. And then A4, 5, and 6 are things that we have talked about quite a bit. A4 is, is new, given that the manufacturing and shipping zone doesn't allow a building to be built right up to the sidewalk, but we just fixed that for the Olson Building. We didn't fix it for the Marine Supply Building. So, this would do that, and it's very simple. The street standards, block by block, gets us to a place where we can say, this, you want to do development on the street, you have to put in sidewalk. We can't just skip over that. And hopefully gets us to a place where those places that, where we don't want sidewalk, there's, because there are some neighborhoods like that, maybe Cap Santa is one, where we're not imposing that on a neighborhood that doesn't want it. And then the Housing Action Plan recommendations. I, I don't even know if it's necessary to say this one or not, because clearly, we're going to be looking at that as part of the updates to our housing element. So, I move that we include 1, 2, 4, 5, and 6.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Fantini?
Just kind of a process question. So, since these are different than the comp plan, this is still, is thi-, is this still us docketing them for further discussion? This isn't implementation immediately. There's still further discussion to be had, right? Okay.
And I think they're in this format because the comp plan could influence how these ultimately turn out. I'm sorry, I didn't, you were about to answer that question.
Yeah, and, you know, they were recommended, so we put them out there for a discussion.
All right. I've got a motion by Mr. Walters, 1, 2, 4, 5, and 6. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Walters and a second by Ms. Moulton to include 1, 2, 4, 5, and 6, A1, 2, 4, 5, and 6, and the developmental regulation proposed. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. Thank you. We're, we're working through this process pretty nicely, so. Mr. Coleman? I mean, it's, you know, we got a few more hours to go.
So, what was that? 1, 2, 4, 5, and 7?
1, 2, 4, 5, and, 1, 2, 4, 5, and 6. And these are, this, you know, open these for discussions.
Okay. So, now we're moving on to petitions by members of the public and non-city entities. These are labeled with B numbers. The first one is the industrial zone permitted uses request by MJB Properties.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
I think most of MJB's petitions make sense and should be moved forward, but the first one, I, I think may be worthy of, of being addressed. Indoor recreation as part of a youth center or indoor recreation center, I think makes sense. But the, the specific text of the proposal doesn't make sense. Moving it forward as a standalone use doesn't make sense in the industrial zone. Self-service storage could make sense, but I don't think anybody wants to see self-service storage that people store their household goods in. Now, as explained by Mr. Blaze, it makes sense to him for industrial uses. So, I think I would not feel comfortable docketing the first one here. I think that there are pieces of it we should address, but I think we can probably do that outside of the docketting process. I, I don't think that we should be sending all that stuff in the form proposed forward into the public process.
Mr. Walters, would you reference the number, please?
Mr. Young.
Thank you, Mayor Miller. I just, we were talking about a proposal, and I just wanted to be clear which ones we're referencing, and I just wanted you to mention the, the ID number if necessary.
I got, I got B6A, B6A, industrial zone permitted uses, MJB property.
Thank you.
How about for the, is there any objections or potential objections to the other ones made by MJB to not docket? made by MJB to not docket? Okay, so let's maybe discuss...
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton, thank you.
Sorry, I was going down the line. I'm looking at B6E to exclude associated landscaping and open space areas from the maximum area site coverage. I am in favor of excluding the open space areas. I'm just not so sure about the associated landscaping, but that doesn't mean I don't think it shouldn't be discussed. I just want to say that for the record.
All right, so you're willing to docket it, but obviously we'll have some more discussion about the details of what that looks like.
Yes.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
I concur with Ms. Moulton that I would change the wording, but I would include it in the docket, because there's the process through which we can get that tweaked.
But not in B6A, because those could be tweaked as well. Okay. All right, how about any support for excluding B6A?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Fantini?
Just a question. So when, when you say it can be worked, because like when I look at that, I see workforce housing, daycare facilities, all things that are very needed in the community. So when you, I just want some clarity on when you say that we can take care of that somewhere else or somehow else, what do you, what do you mean by that?
There was a question of Mr. Walters?
Yeah, it was him.
Mr. Walters?
Mayor Miller?
Yep, Mr. Walters.
Well, I think workforce housing is a wholly, that is a big question, and that's one of the reasons I would exclude it. The other bits, the indoor recreation, the daycare facility, those little bits are very small tweaks to the zoning code that I think that could, could be handled separately. But adding workforce housing to the industrial zone is, I don't, I don't know that that's a discussion that we are ready to have as part of this conference of plan update. I think that's a pretty big deal. Mayor Miller?
Mr. Young?
Mr. Walters, would you elaborate just a little bit more? You think that that's something we may want to discuss later at a different time, or what? I guess what I'm trying to get to is, you know, if this is part of the overall development plans of MJB properties, are you suggesting that we have another opportunity to delve deeper into an understanding, whether it's individual sites or individual pieces rather than sort of broadly? Do you understand what I'm trying to ask?
Mr. Walters?
What I'm suggesting is that the industrial zone, housing is in such a demand. If we enable housing within the industrial zone, I think it will be consumed by housing, and then it won't really be an industrial zone anymore. Now, maybe that makes sense if there's lots of bookends around it and we add a whole lot of conditions to make it very compatible, but that is, that is a big ask. I'm not proposing on a project-by-project basis or anything like that. I'm suggesting that we just not try to tackle that as part of this comp plan update.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Thank you. One of the other conversations we've been having, so I think this is a question for you, Mr. Coleman, is when we go back and look at our zoning map and if we need to make any adjustments, when will that happen? Is that supposed to be right now?
That, once we...
In the docket?
Once we start bringing land use issues to the planning commission, it will jump right into that, because that's going to guide a lot of things down the road.
So, so I guess I'm probably, the purpose of that zone, the industrial zone, I think does not mesh well with residential. My inclination is there may be some desire east of our avenue, some parcels along our avenue. It's got great pedestrian connections now because of the improvements we've done, that there could be some parcels that would make sense to become part of the R4 zone. And to me, that is a more fruitful conversation than outright allowing residential use in the industrial, residential in the industrial zone. So, so I don't know how I, if we docket that now, and it's a conversation for Planning Commission in the future, but to me, that, that's where I would be willing to have some conversation about it, essentially adjacent to the skate park and along that, the, our avenue on the, on the east side.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton?
I concur with Ms. Cleland McGrath. As I'm looking at the zoning map, the industrial area comprises a very small area of town, and if we lose, with the desperation with which we need housing, it would, that could be, but once we lose that industrial, it's, I mean, that's really, really important for industrial uses, and that's our only area. So I would, I would agree with, of excluding this from the docket.
Okay, so I think I got a couple of excludes.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Fantini?
Did you have?
Mayor Miller, I was just going to jump in and echo the previous two commenters.
Okay, Mr. Fantini?
Okay, so I'm just, I'm confused, sorry. So we've all identified that housing is the biggest need in this comp plan. We didn't necessarily say that industry was, so I just have a question. If we were to discuss this, is it possible to have the conversation and, and make it a conditional use where we would have to, like, do you know what I mean? Where it would have to be approved on a project-by-project basis? And again, not the planning expert here, so, but just a...
We can slice it any way we want, but I am recognizing that some of the goals that we're going to be reviewing are actually to reduce that type of site-by-site review in order to streamline permitting.
And so I guess my question, or not my question, just my observation and why I'm struggling with why this shouldn't be included, is, is that, you know, we, we, again, we identified that housing is the number one issue, and we've identified that there are already people that work here that can't afford to live here. So are, do we have a huge demand right now of industry wanting to move here? Has there, has there always just been a hope that more industry would come? Or, because I just, I...
So I have a planner's view. Industrial land is incredibly challenging to cite, and so, you know, I, I have a hard time giving up industrial land to other uses, but, you know, that doesn't mean that we can't have the discussion.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
Certainly, I agree that housing is our number one ask through the comp plan, but we also need to have a mix of land uses and a mix of zones, and that's why it's important to protect the industrial zone, the light manufacturing zone, some of our other, you know, commercial marine manufacturing, shipping. It's, it's important to have zoning for uses that are incompatible with residential uses, and there are some. And the, the basic purpose of zoning, although it's been taken too far in some cases, is to insulate residential uses from smoke stacks and loud noises and, and things like that. And we haven't always done a great job of that in Anacortes, but that's the reason to have it that way. So we could consider a proposal like Ms. Cleland McGrath mentioned, because it, it makes sense on some level to have housing on both sides of our avenue, but also the avenue itself provides a buffer between housing on the west side and industrial land on the east side. I think Mr. Fantini also makes a good point that some of that industrial land seems to be underutilized, but not all of it. And the uses that are, the land uses that are present in the industrial zone right now make noise at night and lights at night, and, you know, those, those things will run into conflict with residential. So we can examine this, but it's a potentially big change, and I, and we're not getting more industrial land anywhere. And so we may really, we, we may shoot ourselves in the foot if we allow too many things to creep into industrial, in terms of the long-term fiscal health with having the proper mix of uses in the city.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Hubick?
To belabor the point, I would like to just vocalize that the actual definition of industrial in our code is actually suitable land that is buffered from residential and other uses that are likely to complain about industrial activities. But the main purpose, as I read this, is, is protecting residential residents from suffering, which also goes into a bit of an equity discussion in making sure that you put people in the right places. Not everybody's going to have a water view, not everybody's going to live right next to the grocery store, but everybody deserves to be able to sleep at night and not have to breathe fumes from heavy industrial machinery. So I feel like that's where there's a discrepancy in what's being asked and what our code allows.
Okay.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Cleland?
I think I've, I've come full circle now. I mean, the whole point of us docketing it is so that planning commissioners, which we have some in the audience, are able to collect feedback from the public and see what works and what doesn't. I think that our conversation we've had on this topic just this evening will help inform kind of where our heads are at at this point. I'm, I'm, I'm okay with the idea of daycare facilities, heavy service, indoor recreation, self-service storage. I'm, I'm okay with that being a further discussion and, and study by the community and through Planning Commission. So I'm almost, I, I'm at a point where I'm almost inclined to include this, because I think it's been made, the point's been made that we do want to protect residents, but is there a way to, that having this discussion probably makes some sense. So I'm actually inclined to include B6A through whatever the end one is, unless I, unless we haven't had further conversation.
B6H? Yes.
Yeah, through H.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Fantini?
If that was a motion, I second it.
Okay, fine.
And I would just also like to say that I appreciate that, because I do think that, you know, we've talked a lot about public input, and while we may get to a decision where we don't want to have workforce housing there, I think being informed by the public, having them have an opportunity to come before the Planning Commission, give their thoughts, whether it be for or against, I think is essential, and, and what we sold to the public. So I just wanted to say thank you for that.
I'm, I'm sorry, I was trying to keep track of including and including. So who made that motion again? Was that Ms. Cleland? Yeah, Ms. Cleland McGrath, and a second by Mr. Fantini to include, to include, include, yes, with an I, 6B, A through 6F.
H.
H, thank you.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters? Additional discussion, yes?
It, it would not surprise me if the industrial zone is called out in the comp plan similarly to what Ms. Hubick recited, meaning that allowing workforce housing might not be compatible with existing comp plan policies. But I think we would all be remiss if we didn't point out that this particular area is the urban renewal area where houses were raised, raised with a Z, to yield industrial land. And there are certainly people in this community who recall that, and I don't think that's going to go over real well. So I would move that we amend this motion to include, to exclude workforce housing from the, from A. So including A through H, but not workforce housing in A.
Back in.
All right, motion by Mr. Walters and a second by Ms. Moulton to amend the original motion that would exclude workforce housing. Additional discussion? All right, let's get to some voting. Mr. Franciac, you understand that motion? Okay.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Ms. Hubick?
Yes.
Mr. Fantini?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and since the other motion is, was on the table for Ms. Cleland McGrath and second by Mr. Fantini, that was to include the wording workforce housing, but I think that's moot at this point. Okay, thank you for that. We only have 10 more to go, and five, 15 other things on the agenda. So, Mr. Coleman?
All right, so that brings us to B7, indoor recreation uses in the LM Zone, proposed by Eric Bowman, who spoke in favor of it tonight, and the planning department did recommend approval based on it meeting criteria.
All right, any objections? Okay, haven't heard any. So, Mr. Coleman, if you want to start marching down, and I'll make sure the council has an opportunity to weigh in.
Next is B8, to designate the entire R1 Zone as a fish and wildlife habitat conservation area. In fact, the next 11 are proposed, this one and the next 10, for a total of 11, are all proposed by Ian Muntz. Planning recommended to not include, to not docket B8.
Counsel, help me out there. Ms. Moulton?
I, I would vote to exclude all of them. The one that was, was recommended for approval by the staff is the one that requires the planning director to issue in public findings of fact for every cottage housing proposal, and it goes on from there, which I think is a, is a slippery slope that then don't, then doesn't that open up the door to findings of fact for every single other kind of housing proposal? So to me, that doesn't make any sense from a realistic standpoint. And the rest of them, I don't, I don't, either they don't quite make sense to me, like the calling the entire R1 Zone and Fish and Wildlife Habitat a critical area, like, they just, they don't scan for me.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Fantini?
There are actually two of these that I would recommend including. One would be the cottage housing development findings of fact. I think that we've seen enough cottage housing built now or in process of being built, when there can be some findings of fact. And I personally, you know, so many people, I think, I can't remember who it was, that said, everyone comes and asks them about the MJB properties development. I can't tell you how many people bring up cottage housing in Anacortes. And I think this is a, based on the interest from our public, we had cottage housing when it was going in up on West Fifth, we had many people here. And, and I, I just feel like that is something that is 100% worth including, because our community brings it up a lot. And I think as representatives, we, again, owe it to our community, to the things that they're interested in, to suss those out and discuss them. That would be the first one. The second one, nobody talks to me about, but I think is, just seems to me to be kind of like, and maybe it's because I recently went and toured the water treatment facility, but B17, where it talks about if the wastewater master plan finds that sewer plant capacity is less than the current population, that we can't, we have to adjust, we have to. I think that's a really good idea, because if we're talking about adding all this housing, nobody has talked about what, and I, and I think that Director Remain is in process of kind of coming up with, you know, some information about what our capacity is. I'd be very interested to hear an update on that. But I think that that is, you know, when I went and toured, they're, they're working pretty hard at the water treatment facility, and I think that if we do not address, you know, adding 1,000 toilets sounds great, but can we flush them all? can we flush them all and not overwhelm the sewer plant? I just, I think there is value in discussing B seventeen and B sixteen.
Okay, is, I'm trying to figure out what, which way council wants to attack this. We, staff obviously recommended excluding a number of these items. Mr. Fan, is there any support for Mr. Fantini including some of these two particular items, I think? We'll start with there.
Mayor Miller.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young, and then Ms. Moulton.
Yes, I agree with Mr. Fantini. I think that those are worthy of discussion, at least, in determining, you know, where we want to go, how we want to do. I think that, you know, given the development, we're already investing and trying to solve some of these issues. I think it's just kind of worthy of a look. And so I'm with Mr. Fantini on including these two items.
If I could point out a technical aspect.
Thank you.
So while we're studying our growth, we're required to look into what we need to do to, if we need to expand our urban, if we need to expand our sewer facilities. If we were, what this is saying is that if our sewer plant can't handle growth, that we would not allow ourselves to grow. That is patently not allowed by state law. And so I find that argument that we shouldn't grow because our sewer treatment plant can't handle it as a dangerous path to go down.
Mayor Miller.
Mr., wait, Ms. Moulton, were you, were you next, or did I already come to you?
Mr. Coleman answered the question that I was about to ask.
Mr. Walters.
I concur with Mr. Coleman. It's simply not legal. But second, it's not clear what it is. There is not actually a proposal for a development regulation change in number 10 sewer plant capacity. The petition does not include a proposal. So I think Mr. Coleman is being charitable because he's interpreting what's there. With respect to the cottage housing, I certainly understand that some people want to talk about cottage housing, but the petition with respect to cottage housing doesn't change anything substantive, it just adds a procedural requirement. And in my experience, we're not actually that excited about more legal notices and those kinds of things. What needs to be done here is to talk about the substance, not about, you know, some additional step. Once someone has approved cottage housing development, typically a land division, most of the cottage housing requirements are already figured out. I mean, a lot of the cottage housing requirements have to do with how you face the open space, how much open space there is, how much private open space there is, those kinds of things. That's all site plan and not individual building permit for a cottage. So this, I mean, I understand the desire to talk about cottage housing, but this one doesn't do it. It doesn't engage in that conversation. Instead, it just, it adds this sort of extra make-work requirement. So I'm not in favor of either of those. The one that I think could bear some discussion is the last one, which proposes a very specific change to the critical areas code. We are going to be updating the critical areas code anyway, so I don't know that it needs to be docketed, but it engages in this conversation about must we investigate a critical areas violation, must we require restoration of a buffer, versus, I guess it says may, it's not, it's not in strike through an underline. So that one, I think, is worthy of talking about, but we are going to be doing it as part of the critical areas update. I get the impression quite a few things are going to change in the critical areas code as we do that. It's a required element of the comp plan update, so I wouldn't docket it either, which leaves nothing. I would docket none of these 11.
Okay, thank you for getting to the crux of, so I've got, just making sure, is there's no other support for including 16 and 17?
Mayor.
No, I'm asking other people who didn't want to, so I understand that you want 16 and 17 to be included in the doc, and I'm asking other council members whether or not they support including those. Okay. So perhaps the motion to, for the larger group, or if there's any other ones that council members like to include.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
I move to exclude B eight through B seventeen, well, I guess, so the critical areas, so I do appreciate, okay, B seven through B eighteen, but I would like to underscore that we do need to amend, I believe, changing may to will regarding a responsible party being subject to penalties for unauthorized critical area infractions. So this might not be the right place to do it, not docket it, but I'm not sure. Mr. Coleman, do you have advice on that? B eighteen, if we do it as a part of the, part of the development regulations, or we're just doing it with critical areas? Probably the sooner the better, is what I'm thinking.
We will be reviewing our critical areas. One of our comments was the proposed amendments raises policy issues that would be more appropriately addressed as part of a planned work program outside the mandatory periodic update process. So this is, this is a much larger topic than.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question. So I move to exclude B eight through B eighteen.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Moulton, for motion to exclude B eight through B eighteen, a second by Ms. Hubick. Any additional discussion?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
I just wanted to explain my shock, disbelief faced when Mr. Walters mentioned that people don't want another legal notice. I distinctly remember sitting here for three months while several people came up here and asked where their legal notice was for the cottage housing that was built on West Fifth without any signage or anything like that. So I totally understand everything that is being said, but I definitely take issue and disagree that I don't think people are saying, "Don't tell us what's going on." I think more people, probably even in this room, would like to know what's going on.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Okay, we need to address that because we're not talking generally about notice. There is a very specific proposal in front of us, and that's to record findings of fact on a building permit application, a building permit application where the decisions about cottage housing have been made before on a land division application or on some other application. If you want to achieve, I think, what Mr. Fantini talks about, there are ways to do that. This isn't it. This doesn't do it.
Okay, so I've got a motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Ms. Hubick. Mr. Franciac, take the vote, please.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Fantini.
No.
Mr. Young.
No.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. On to the next one, Mr. Coleman. I'm guessing it's 19A and A through.
Yes, so the next are several proposed by Bill Turner. The first is to address housing needs by establishing long-term subsidized housing targets instead of projections. We recommended against this because there is a prescribed way in the Washington State Department of Commerce that says how we have to study the amount of housing that we have. So we find this in conflict with what's required by the state. The second is to add term length for affordable housing property restriction. We recommended that not be approved. I think there was some confusion about the, what that was actually about. Then the multifamily tax exemption under B nineteen E, my stuff's out of order, I apologize. We recommend it against because it's a large project and we are already looking at doing, we are exploring that already, but it's a large project that we're a little concerned about taking on as part of the comp plan because it is very heavy lift. So we're looking to, I guess, defer that to a future time.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Importantly, each of these is not a development regulation proposal. One is a hiring program, one is a tax program, one is about fees, none of them are, none of them are proposed changes to the development regulations. Number one, about housing targets, could be, except that it's, if anything, it's a comp plan amendment, but it also, it's contrary to how we are required to do that planning. So I would, I would move that we exclude each of these, including that one, that 19F.
Second.
So 19A through F.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Ms. Hubick to exclude 19A through F. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac, vote, please.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Fantini.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. All right, we got through some comp plan docketing.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
Could I just, the next item on the agenda I have great interest in, and I need to use the restroom, could we call maybe just a quick two-minute break?
Okay, just, I'll look for a second or a head nod, and we'll take a five-minute break.
Apologies.
Eight, eight thirty. Eight thirty, we'll reconvene. Okay, I've got eight thirty. If we could get council members to come back. So we want to roll the, roll the clock over. Okay, I'd like to call the meeting back to order. And next up is item seven, item seven A under other business. This is a request to modify cinema leases, a discussion item, possible action. He's in the, he's in the council chambers. Ms. Swetnam, if you're going to introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor Miller, members of council, and members of the audience. So I'm going to just briefly introduce item seven A and then turn it over to the request. So I'm going to just briefly introduce item seven A and then turn it over to the request ers. So item seven A is a request from Nancy Saunders, who is a member of the corporation that owns the building that houses the movie theater. So Ms. Saunders has submitted a letter to the city requesting that the city council amend the lease agreement that, that is with Radius Anacortes Properties LLC. And the specific change that she's requesting is a modification to paragraph eighteen. And this is, we talked about this back in March, but as a refresher, paragraph eighteen has restrictions on assigning or subleasing the lease agreement. And that language says that currently the city may not assign the lease to anyone who doesn't have at least five years in the movie industry. And so the request that Ms. Saunders has made to council is to modify that paragraph to allow an assignee to satisfy that experience requirement if its subtenant has at least five years' experience in the business of movie theater management or operations. So this, this letter was received by staff members. We put it on the agenda and I will turn it over to Ms. Saunders to present her request to council and I will stick around to answer questions when she's done.
Thank you. Mayor Miller, council members, I'm Nancy Saunders. I'm the managing member of Radius Properties LLC that owns the theater cinema on O Avenue. My request tonight is to make a wording change to paragraph eighteen in the lease with Radius Anacortes Properties and the City of Anacortes. So it complies with the current operation of the cinema and as it has been operated since 2001. And that is that either the owner or the contracted operator of the theater has the required experience in the operation of a movie theater. I want to do a little history here. A team of people who had been involved in the Ocean Shore Cinema Project came together at the request of the city to build a cinema on their property, on their city property on O Avenue in the year about 2000. Shortly after construction, the team dissolved, taking their profit off the top and leaving David, my husband, with the asset and the remaining debt service on the construction debt. A lease to operate the city with its then-current operator called Anacortes Cinemas LLC, which was part of the building team, was entered into in 2001 and has continued and continued until the assigned manager committed suicide and Far Away Enterprises was assigned to the lease by Radius LLC to operate the cinema. Now, my husband David managed to get the finances into a reasonable situation. At this time in 2024, the cinema has once again almost reached an even profit-loss level it had in 2019 before COVID, when COVID required the closure. And it's been a long recovery for a lot of companies, as most of you know. Now, David passed away in 2021. And I was needing to divest of businesses he operated. I'm eighty years old. I have no interest in a new career in business managing a movie theater. So I put the theater on the market at a reduced price, hoping to sell it to someone interested in keeping a cinema in Anacortes that, and a price that would allow me to pay off the debt service so that whoever purchased it would be able to be in a profitable situation. I live 125 miles away and I honestly have at heart Anacortes and their, the citizens want for a cinema theater. The wording in paragraph eighteen has been a roadblock. We've had several buyers for the sale of this property and something usually comes up regarding an owner being someone with five years of movie experience. So I'm asking you to consider the change in wording in paragraph eighteen. You received a copy of the letter. Your city attorney has drafted wording for the change in the amendment. I would like you to consider that, please. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I do have this as a mark for members of the public that wish to address the council on this issue. Anybody? Sure, come on up.
I'm stuck.
Thank you, Mayor Miller and city council. John Prosser, live in Anacortes. I did a lengthy presentation on March 26th, so I won't go through that again. It's kind of late. Ms. Hubig, you were the only one that wasn't here that night. I don't know if you had a chance to take a look at, great. I just want to speak in support of this amendment. It allows Nancy Saunders to sell this building. If, if she doesn't sell it, I don't know what will happen. I'm not going to guess, I'm not going to speculate. But at the same time, we've had five cash offers that have not been able to close. These are people that wanted to renovate the building. They wanted Jeff Bryan, who is the owner of Far Away Entertainment LLC. He wants to stay on. We've gone, we've gone all through this. He's willing to extend the lease ten years. We could keep the theater going at least till 2036, in my mind. But, you know, that's all speculation too, and I understand that. But the thing is, she can't sell the building the way this lease reads. And we're just asking, we think it's kind of simple, that the, the movie operator should be able to meet that requirement of five years' experience. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, council?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
For anybody who can answer this question, do we know how much debt was taken on to build this building?
So, yeah, the portable microphone, if we, I think we have it. Just to make sure we can get it.
I recall, I recall hearing that it was close to a million dollars.
Okay, and how and when did Heritage Construction Group, with whom the city signed the lease, assign the lease to Radius Anacortes Properties? Do we know when that occurred?
David, my husband, David Saunders and Pat Brenstedt were Heritage Construction. Heritage Construction shortly after building the theater broke up. Pat, Patrick took his profit off the top and David took the asset believing that he could get the theater construction loan paid for and make it be successful. One of the reasons I wanted to reduce that debt, and I, and I could do that if I sell the building, is that whoever owns the building probably would rent it and make a small profit as a building owner. And the operator of the movie theater is the one that would then also make profits. So there would be the lease, the lease, you are the lessor, I would be the lessy, and then I would have a sublessy, or I have, as it is now, I have a sublessy that has operated the movie business. Did I answer that question?
So when, when did Heritage Construction Group assign the lease to Radius Anacortes?
In 2001.
Right, almost right away.
David was economic development director in the City of Ocean Shores. Pat Brenstedt was a contractor. The city approached the people involved in building the Ocean Shore Cinema and asked them to build the same three-screen first-run theater here in the City of Anacortes. And so this team was formed to build this building for the City of Anacortes. And in 2001, Heritage Construction, David, my husband, and Pat Brenstedt dissolved their relation, dissolved their relationship.
And do you know how much debt you currently have against the building?
I still have about $300,000.
Council, any other questions for the petition?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. This one's for Ms. Swetnam. So I'm looking at the language side by side, the paragraph eighteen, and then the suggested change. So could you tell us exactly what the difference is with, with the request compared to what it is now? Could you say what it is now and what the request would result in for all of our edification?
The specific language. Okay, give me just a second. Okay, so currently, the way the lease reads, it says, "lessy," which in this case, Ms. Saunders, "shall not sublet or assign this lease or any interest therein without the prior written consent of the lessor, the city, which consent shall not be unreasonably withheld." Then there's a paragraph in the current agreement that says that the parties acknowledge Anacortes Cinemas LLC is approved as a subtenant, but that's no longer relevant. The, the, the language that I think is the requested change is, "any other contemplated sublessy or assignee shall have at least five years' experience in the business of movie theater management or operations or a related business and shall be financially capable of assuming said role." So the way that reads now, if Ms. Saunders were to sell the building to a third party, that party would be an assignee on the lease because we would have to assign the obligations and privileges under the current lease to that third party. So under the current structure, that person would have to have five years' experience in the movie theater business. The proposed change, so again, we have, "lessy shall not sublet or assign this lease or any interest therein without the prior written consent of lessor, which shall not be unreasonably withheld." That's the same. "Any proposed sublessy or assignee shall have at least five years' experience in the business of movie theater management or operations or a related business and shall be financially capable of assuming said role." So that's the same. But the last sentence says, "a proposed assignee may satisfy the experience requirement if its sublessy has at least five years' experience in the business of movie theater management or operations." So the way I understand that, an interested buyer could meet that five-years' experience requirement by having a subtenant that is in the building running the movie theater. There would still have to be that requirement that they have five years of experience, but the owner of the building itself would not then have to meet that requirement directly.
Thank you, that's helpful. And so, like, how does that bind and secure the future of the cinema going forward?
Not, what, in what way?
Okay, so a buyer buys it, the sublessy who's currently there fulfills the requirements. Then what? I mean, how is this, I mean, that could last for like one second, right? I mean.
Sure.
An investor would be a person that would buy the theater. Is this on?
Yeah.
A, my operator, Far Away Enterprises, operates seven movie theaters in the area. And that is their business to operate movie theaters. They are not purchasers of buildings.
So, so, I'm sorry, I think it wasn't clear because you're answering that. So I'm talking about the new owner. What, I, I understand that Far Away has this experience and is running the movie theater and has been. But say the new owner comes in and they have this sublessy, what's their requirement to keep that sublessy running the cinema? That's what I'm saying, like, how does that secure that it's still going to be Far Away Entertainment? We have a new owner, we have a sublessy, but how does, how does that guarantee that that sublessy stays? Maybe the person buys the building and says, okay, I'm done with being a cinema. How does that obligate them to keep the cinema going?
Then they'd have to deal with the city regarding the lease. The lease says that it is, that, that this building will be used as a movie theater and that either the owner or the operator to which the owner is leasing the building must have five years' experience in the movie industry. So if they buy the building and they don't abide by the lease, I don't know what happens.
I, I can, I can maybe add some additional context there. I think what you've identified is that this restriction only applies to the assignment of the lease. So you're correct that if they demonstrate experience at the time of assignment, as, as far as it goes, if the subtenant bails, that particular paragraph doesn't guarantee that there is a subtenant in there that has movie theater experience. The, the point that Ms. Saunders raised is that there is language in paragraph fourteen that requires that the, the building will be used to operate a movie theater showing first-run movies. Paragraph, sub-paragraph B says, "lessy agrees that its failure to operate a movie theater on a continuing basis other than a reasonable time for repairs or remodeling may result in lessor terminating the lease," whoops, sorry, wrong page, "may, may result in lessor terminating the lease. Under the circumstances, a material breach, the city has the right to renegotiate the lease and parking arrangement." Now, it goes on to say that, that, that the city agrees that if the tenant exercises reasonable and best efforts, is unable to operate a movie theater or find a suitable sublessy to operate a movie theater, the city would allow the owner to make other suitable business use of the lease premises and improvements, subject to the right to renegotiate the lease. So there is that language in the lease that says it has to continue to be used for a movie theater unless after taking reasonable efforts to find a replacement movie theater operation, then there, there can be the provision for other uses after renegotiation process. Does that answer your question?
May I add something? The current operator has spoke, we've had five good buyers come in over the past three years about this building. And in talking to two of them, they have asked whether he would either stay on or if he would extend the lease. And in two cases where that question was asked of possible purchasers, he agreed to extend the lease to the 2026 year when my current lease is up and my lease with him is up, and that he would be willing to extend that lease to the year 2036 as the operator of that movie theater. Hope that helps too. In other words, the future looks good for it.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I, I think I understand the concern here. I think I understand that you would like to get a better price for the building. I think I also understand Ms. Moulton's point that once the lease is transferred, if we agree to this amendment, we, we really have no effective way of requiring the five years' experience in the business of movie theater operating. The, the subtenant has already changed once. We didn't have to approve the change in the subtenant. Right?
So are you saying that in 2026, I will not be able to renegotiate a lease with the city?
Didn't get there yet, didn't get there yet.
Okay.
Yeah. I had a few more, a few more things to say. So the, so my, my point here is that the, the sub, we don't have control over who the subtenant is. We only have control over assignment of the lease. And the lease was written pretty clearly to allow for the owner of the building to assign the lease to the cinema company, which makes perfect sense to me because the cinema company is who we were all in bed with here at the beginning. And the objective here is to operate a cinema. So in trying to, in trying to think of a, of a way here that we can really make progress, resolve this situation. resolve this situation, and continue the operation of the cinema, which I think admittedly is having some difficulty, but is important, especially in a town with a decreasing number of things for kids to do and for adults to do, I think, I think we should consider a third way. I think that at this point, we should go into executive session for the purpose of talking about potential litigation and real estate acquisition. So I would move that we go into executive session for those purposes.
Okay.
Okay, we had a motion by Mr. Walters and a second by Ms. Cleland McGrath that counsel moves into executive session for discussion of real estate transactions under RCW. I don't, can't quote that, but it's covered under the RCW for real estate transactions.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Fantini?
Is there opportunity for more discussion before we vote on that?
You could amend the motion, I think, but we've got a...
I would like to amend the motion. I have a couple of things I would like to ask before going into the executive session.
All right, why don't we just try, why don't we just try to...
Try to keep it short because we're running at three and a half hours?
Yeah.
Okay. I just have a question for you. You mentioned that you've had five buyers. Have all of those buyers wanted to run it as a movie theater?
Yes, and none of the buyers have had the experience as, as a movie operator. Movie operators don't buy buildings, period.
So you, but you did have, if I remember, because I was, I was part of this group, you did have a group that wanted to purchase the movie theater from you, the arts group?
Yes.
And they wanted to then repurpose it into more of a community asset. Is that a discussion you're familiar with?
I am familiar with that discussion, and yes, that kept it off the market for almost a year.
Because you wanted to sell it to them, correct?
Yes, but we kept getting a request for a continuance.
So I guess my question would be, do you know why that didn't happen?
No. I do, I do not know exactly why that did not happen.
Does anyone up here know why that didn't happen? Because as I remember, it was a decision that was put to the planning committee, and then there were further discussions with some of the stakeholders and a few members of council, and then it, nothing happened. And I was just wondering if there is any, and I'm not, I'm not suggesting anything untoward or bad. I'm, I'm just curious why that broke down. I was actually asking my, I think it was, I don't remember, I'm, I'm pretty sure, and again, I'm not trying to shine spotlights or say anything untoward. I'm not suggesting anything malicious or mal, you know, bad happened. I just am wondering because I know those were discussions that were had between the stakeholders, and I think it was Mr. Walters and Ms. Cleland McGrath. So I was just curious why the, and Carolyn, thank you, sorry. Sorry, Ms. Moulton, sorry.
And there were discussions during that timeframe with, with changes to the lease at that time.
Right.
More significant than chapter or paragraph 18.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, so...
And I'm just curious why that...
And I think Mr. Walters wanted to try to jump in on this. Mr. Walters?
Yeah, I can give you the synopsis. First of all, the arts group proposed changes to the lease. Those lease changes, I think, were a little unclear, and they rattled around inside City Hall for maybe a year before getting in front of council. They got in front of council. Council said, you know, "We'd kind of like to keep going with a movie theater. Can you accommodate a movie theater in your arts building?" I don't recall precisely what the arts group said, but we pointed to examples of other places where there are movie theaters that are profitable and, or at least are ongoing, whether they're profitable or not, including locally, in Skagit County and San Juan County. It went to, council decided to have the planning committee talk in detail with the arts group. We did. That same week, this was, I think, Thanksgiving week, the arts group said that they would construct a lease to basically continue operations of the movie theater. They came back, I think, January or February with a very complicated lease that created a bunch of if-then statements. If we change it to an arts center, then this will happen, et cetera. The arts group was not ready at that time to commit to a specific thing that they wanted to do on city property. I think it's fair to say staff, and the planning committee didn't recommend a lease that was just completely open-ended because we wouldn't even have agreement on price. If we don't know what you're going to do with the property, we can't get to an agreement on price because we cannot lease the property below market rate for things that don't constitute a public benefit. And so I think more or less, there was a failure to have a meeting of the minds there. With no price, there's no meeting of the minds. And ultimately, the arts group withdrew or let their purchase and sale agreement expire. In that time there, I think that there was one or two other city council meetings about it as well, and we reported out progress at each meeting.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Young?
To be clear, when Mr. Walters was saying council, I think he's referencing the committee versus all members of council.
No, I'm not.
Mr. Walters, do you have an...
I'm sorry, I'm not.
I'm still speaking, Mr. Walters.
I completely understand that, but that's not, that's not the case.
But I'm still speaking.
Okay.
Okay, I have the floor.
Do not characterize my comments then. Say your own.
No, no, no. I'm making them now if you allow me to speak. The point that I'm making is that there is a difference between committee and all of council. This came to council. I mean, of course, you know, there was an overture, I think they call it the 20, 30,000 feet overture. None of the details about what happened, and again, I don't think it was nefarious. I don't. But the issue is that all of the council's members were not involved in this decision whatsoever. I think the inference that came out of this meeting was that council would not be moving forward, and so therefore, it was no need to come before the whole body of council. The only time this came out was when we had it come before council. Mr. Prosser in the packet of information indicated that there were meetings that took place that I wasn't aware of, you know, beyond the overture. And so the next thing we knew was that the arts had decided to move to the Buxton Building. So what I'm saying, though, is in this moment, we've had great clarity about discussion.
Thank you.
And, and I appreciate that. I think that where we are erring as a council is that we're so far in the weeds on the success of a business or not in determining whether or not we're going to allow it, and in a way, almost demand a success or demand a business stay. Imagine if we were to do that for other businesses that come here to Anacortes. I just don't think that that's in our purview. I think our concern is important, our concern to make sure that we have a theater, which I recognize, you know, which is what you're hearing members of council say. I get that. I mean, I really do, and I support that. But are we obligated to determine the success of a business or not? And that's why I think we're erring because I think that we are about to make a condition of approval or denial based upon a thought of success. And I just don't think that that's within our purview. Businesses come and go at every turn. Yes, I understand that we may need to be cautious in what we want to do or what may come out of it, but the truth of the matter is that the best thing that I've heard out of them every single time and every single person, that every time anyone said that there was a buyer coming up, their intent was to do the theater and to keep the theater going. We cannot guarantee that as a council because if we did it for this one, we will need to guarantee it for others. And I think that, you know, we just can't do that. So my hope is that we will have it, yes. And maybe there's some modifications to the contract that we can do that further strengthens the concerns about what we do or don't want, or how, if it doesn't continue, then it may in some way revert to the city, or it brings up the lease for discussion. But right now, the way I see this argument is that we're discussing whether or not a business can succeed or fail, and we're demanding that it succeed because we want this particular business. I just don't think that that's within our authority. I think our concern is for the theater, yes, and what we would like to have for all the reasons Mr. Walters cited, as well as I'm sure Ms. Moulton and Ms. Cleland McGrath. Those are wonderful reasons. But as a council, we do not have the authority to litigate and demand that a business succeed. So in this case, I think that there are modifications that maybe need to be placed on the lease if we're doing it this way to further galvanize the sentiment and worries of this other city council members. But, you know, again, I'm struggling with the idea that we would try to demand a success. And you're already indicated, I believe in some of the previous packet information, that, that there is a possibility that you may not be able to continue. So what have we accomplished by this? Nothing, because this theater would not exist if at any point she decides she can no longer go any further. And so whether or not we're talking about how much money she's, that's a willing buyer and a willing seller. That's the, that's the whole nature of business. But I'm struggling with that, and I think that we've stretched beyond into the weeds about this business. I'm hoping it succeeds. I'm a supporter of the, making the modification, but I don't believe that it's truly in the purview of this council that we should demand a business succeed and we tell it what it should be simply because we hold the lease. The lease established outright in the very beginning. And, and we can renegotiate that, but I'm struggling with that.
Thank you. So I've got a motion by Mr. Walters and a second by Ms. Cleland McGrath to move to executive session due to potential litigation. Can I have a...
Can I respond?
Yeah, you say, you, you ask like everybody else.
Sorry, mayor.
Okay, Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Thank you.
That's how we keep ordering here.
Yeah. To start with Mr. Fantini's questions, I was actually on the board for the Arts Festival for over 10 years. Was on the board when this idea, when it came on the market, got off the board intentionally because it was a conflict of interest because of it coming in front of council. The big difference between any other business and this specific site is the fact that the city owns the land underneath it. And as we have seen, this was probably not the best setup to, to have a private individual build, building, and then we own the land underneath it. We have created this mess in the, in the late 90s, early 2000s, and now it's time for us to clean it up because I don't want this mess to happen again five, 10, 15 years from now. And it's, and I am sorry that you are stuck in this spot right now because it's not, that is not your, you went in with good faith, and right now, we've got to figure out a solution that makes sense moving forward. So to answer one of the other questions we received, there was a memorandum that Mr. Walters wrote on November 28th of 2022. I have it here. I think it went out to all of council. It helped organize our thoughts when we were meeting with the attorneys for the Arts Festival. I'm happy to resend that out, and it gave clear expectations of how are we going to deal with rent? How are we going to deal, questioning how we are going to deal with a period during construction? Is it going to be 24 months? Will it be less than that or more? And one of the real challenges that the Arts Festival had and the group had, which I know you were part of, is trying to articulate the proposed facility, who the partners were going to be, what the activities were going to be, the programming, was there going to be residential above? It, it snowballed into a very different project. Is it affordable? Is it permanently subsidized housing? That has a different requirement for the lease rent, the lease amount versus for the greater good. There were a lot of things that had not been addressed by the group, and they weren't ready to sign a lease with the city because they couldn't articulate what they wanted. So there was no way they were going, the Arts Festival was going to get to that place or the arts group. It was, it was a, I mean, Anacortes Music Project and, and a theater and whatnot. I don't think it was the city or the planning committee that held it up. We were just the ones having to ask the challenging questions of how are you going to put something on paper to present to the public so that there were, there was a timeline and expectations that would be met or not met? We, we need to move forward, which is why I think it is time for us to go into executive session.
Okay, well, thanks for bringing me back to where I was trying to go. I do have a motion by Mr. Walters and a second by Ms. Cleland McGrath to move the council to executive session to discuss potential litigation and...
Mayor Miller?
Yes.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
I'm asking for a simple change in wording in paragraph 18 to allow the theater to be operated by an experienced movie operator as it has been since 2001, and that is the only thing that I would put on the table this evening. Is it possible that we can vote on paragraph 18 and make that change so it complies with how the movie oper, the movie theater has been operating since the year 2001?
Yeah, I think council's probably pretty clear about that that's the ask for tonight, and I appreciate the history and all that. But Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that up because I, that was my last point. One of the potential buyers who came and spoke to our planning committee had a master plan concept that he, that there would be the movie theater as a movie theater, and then there, there was going to be small units built on our leased land where the expansion could have happened of the movie theater. And in that meeting, I specifically asked the potential buyer of the building, "Okay, you're, you don't have experience, but you say you have, the, the operator wants to stay for 10 more years. Put the operator on the lease with the city as, as part of it to ensure that the city would have, there would be some skin in the game, right? That that operator is saying, "Yep, I'm going to do this for 10 years," and the property owner would say, "Yep, I'm going to own this building," and he, the potential buyer of the building, said absolutely not. So I do not want us to change, he would not put, the potential buyer of the building would not allow the operator to be put on the lease with the city.
Oh, I see.
And to me, that is a red flag that, okay, this person may be buying the building, but once that operator's no longer operating a business that, or the movie theater there, they're going to be coming back to us and saying, "Hey, I've invested this money. I want to go do something else with it." And I am really uncomfortable just having to do this again in the future. It's leased land. The, the city owns the land. We've got to figure out some solution for you.
Thank you. I would like John Prosser, who is the real estate agent I'm working with and the sale of this, to respond to that.
Mayor Miller?
Did we call the question?
Okay, so I've got a call for the question to move into executive session. Mr. Franciac, would you take the vote, please, on moving the council to executive session?
Mr. Fantini?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
No.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Ms. Hubick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the council will now meet in executive...
Mayor, point of order?
No, we're moving to executive session. It's been voted on. The council will now meet in executive session to discuss potential litigation per RCW 4230-110, and this will be approximately 15 minutes. So it's zero, it's 9:10 PM, and we'll be back at 9:25 unless I come back to extend it. Thank you. And no action will be taken. Okay, we're back. I call the regular meeting back to order, and no action was taken in executive session.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
Given that we have given the mayor and council requests to work on over the next couple of weeks, I move that we postpone consideration of this item for two weeks.
Second?
Okay, motion by Mr. Walters and a second by Mr. Fantini to postpone this item for two weeks. Additional discussion? Mr. Franciac, you take a vote, please?
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Ms. Hubick?
Yes.
Mr. Fantini?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thanks. On to item 7B, this is an agreed order with Department of Ecology on A Avenue landfill site, discussion item with possible action, and luckily Ms. Swetnam is already at the dais.
I am, thank you, Mayor Miller and members of council, so I'm going to be presenting the next two agenda items, both of which relate to the A Avenue landfill site. So the first item, and I also want to mention that the city's consultant from Anchor QEA, Julia Fitz, has patiently been on the line this entire meeting, waiting to be able to provide some insight to council on these next two agenda items. So the first one is an agreed order with the Department of Ecology on the A Avenue landfill site. The agreed order is a legal document that was negotiated with the Department of Ecology, and it provides the process for the city to work through evaluating next steps on the A Avenue landfill site. So this is done pursuant to the Model Toxic Control Act, or MATCA, and the agreed order provides that there will be a remedial investigation where the city, through its consultants, will evaluate the site and identify if there are any things that need to be addressed through a remedial investigation and a possible cleanup action plan. I can, I think that council has probably been briefed on the fact that this agreed order has been in the negotiation phase for the last couple of years, and that's really, a lot of that has been waiting for responses from the Department of Ecology. We appreciate their cooperation, and staff is recommending approval of the agreed order. And I'm happy to turn it over to Julia to provide additional comments or information about the site.
Hi, Julia, thanks, thanks for your patience.
Hello, yeah, thanks for having me, thank you, Mayor Miller. As Darcy mentioned, the agreed order is a legal agreement. It outlines the process that the city will need to go through to investigate environmental conditions at the A Avenue landfill site. And this agreed order went through Ecology's review, there was a public meeting that was held in council chambers on April 15th to review the agreed order and solicit public comments from the community, and so this is the result of that final agreement that is ready to be executed and signed by the mayor at this time.
All right, any questions for Ms. Fitz or Ms. Swetnam, council?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Young?
Unless there's any additional questions that you have, a question, Mr. Walters?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
Well, I did, so the next item on our agenda is a contract modification for Anchor QEA. Is that going to cover the costs that we are going to incur under the agreed order? Or is there going to be more than that?
So the scope amendment, which is the change order request, which is the next agenda item, is to cover effort through the end of April 2025 to support development of the first deliverable under the agreed order, which is the remedial investigation work plan. There will be additional work required by Ecology under this order that has not currently been scoped, as the extent of that work that is required is not yet known.
Yeah, you've got to prepare a cleanup action plan based on the remedial investigation work.
Right, the outcome of the remedial investigation work plan, once Ecology approves it, will need to be implemented, so we'll need to conduct the sampling per the plan, and that has yet to be scoped. And an outcome to that could necessitate that a feasibility study be performed, and that if a cleanup is necessary under state cleanup law, then a draft cleanup action plan would need to also be developed. An alternative scenario or outcome is that the results of the remedial investigation do not identify any unacceptable risk to human health or the environment, and as such, no additional work would need to be performed.
And as I checked in with Mr. Hoagland earlier today, we're paying for this work out of our solid waste fund, which is appropriate, given it's a solid waste enterprise here, but it, that's also one of our funds that is in less good shape compared to others. And we are... And we are faced with an increase in solid waste rates. All of that provides context. It doesn't change my view that the most important thing that we need to do as a city is clean up our own messes and make sure that they're not affecting human health or the environment. So I'm still supportive of this, but I think we need to keep all that in mind as we're moving forward with each of these items.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
In lieu of Mr. Walters' comments, unless there's any other, a move we approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreed order with the Department of Ecology for the A Avenue landfill site, Ecology Agreed Order Number DE 22379.
Motion by Mr. Young and a second by Mr. Walters to authorize me to sign the agreed upon order as presented. Additional discussion? Mr. Franciak, vote please.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Fantini.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. This segues into, as we hinted at, the contract modification for Anchor QEA master services agreement. Ms. Swetnam.
I think Julia did a good job of talking about what the scope of this modification is, but I just want to mention from staff's perspective that we've worked with Anchor QEA on the water treatment plant cleanup project and have been working with Anchor QEA thus far on the A Avenue landfill site and appreciate the collaborative approach that they take on helping move these sites forward and maintaining positive relationship with the Department of Ecology. I think Julia described what this next scope of work will cover and staff recommends approval.
Mayor Miller.
Thank you. Ms. Moulton.
Just a quick question. I see that the current agreement amount is $2.2 million and I had asked Mr. Lunsford earlier in the day if that was just for the A Avenue landfill and he indicated that it is not all for the A Avenue landfill. I believe this contract includes, like you said, the water treatment plant cleanup and that was a very expensive, high-ticket item as well. So I just wanted to call that out. And with that, I move that the city council authorize the mayor to sign a modification to Contract 21024 LEG 001 with Anchor QEA in the amount of $46,900, increasing the total contract price to $2,290,933.
Second.
Okay, simultaneous second, but a motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Mr. Fantini to approve the contract as, the contract modification as presented. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciak, vote please.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Fantini.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, just a few more items. Thank you very much and thank you, Julia. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is 7E, Contract Modification, R Avenue Long-Term Improvement Project. And Mr. Rayum is, did I skip something? Yep, I did. Okay, sorry. It is, even, even I can get tired. Okay, 7D, Interlocal Agreement with Skagit County and Providers for the Provision of Emergency Medical Services. Discussion item with possible action. Interlocal Agreement. Thank you, chief. Even if with that delay, you weren't ready to go. Sorry, I'm trying to deflect on my mess up here, but thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Miller, members of council. In 2019, we signed a six-year agreement with Skagit County to provide EMS services throughout with the new revisions after medical one dissolved. That expires at the end of this year and what you have before you tonight is the new six-year agreement that will coincide with the next levy cycle. And there's no significant operational changes to the contract. It's mostly administrative cleanup. And you'll see we, they've added a diligent standards of good faith for dispute resolution. Several things that were sort of made up now align with the WAC. Our EMS standards, which is training, protocols, equipment standards, things like that, along with our response times, now does fall into line with state standards. Quite a bit of items were removed from the contract that are better fit for SOPs, things like QA procedures, how to report and things like that. There's also some accreditation requirements that everyone determined, all parties determined really weren't of any value and were expensive. So those are no longer required. Cleaned up some equipment funding language and then there was a tremendous amount of language that was specific to the first contract as we took over the services from the pre-existing agencies. Here's still in Exhibit C, you'll see the funding model. Again, after the recent levy vote, went to 47 cents. This year in 2024, the last year of the current contract, City of Anacortes receiving just about 1.5 million. Next year, it'll go to 2.1 million and then with just normal 1% increases, we'll reach about 2.6 million by 2030, the last year of the contract. And with that, any questions? I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions for Chief Harris? Okay, motions perhaps.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
I move that the city council authorize the mayor to execute interlocal cooperative agreement 25-001-AFD-001 between the City of Anacortes, Skagit County and Providers.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Fantini, a second by Ms. Hubick to approve the interlocal cooperative agreement as presented. Any additional discussion?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I think this agreement is fine, but the payment schedule that you had on the screen there a moment ago was the thing that was not available to us at the time of the levy.
Back of the presentation, yes, correct.
Right. That shouldn't have happened. So, I mean, we should have objected to not having that information available to us at the time at which we all had to get behind the levy. And I know that's not on us because it's a countywide thing, but that's what we should be insisting on as a general matter.
All right. Okay, a motion by Mr. Fantini, a second by Ms. Hubick. Mr. Franciak, vote please.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Fantini.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, now I've made it to item 7E, Contract Modification, R Avenue Long-Term Improvement Project. Mr. Rayum.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Before you is a contract modification for $385,320.55, increasing the total contract amount with SRV construction incorporated to $5,037,333.15. As you will see in the packet, that this is the fourth contract modification. The first two modifications were time extensions to complete the contract. The third modification was to increase the original contract amount by $327,100. I love the, I love when we have change on these large numbers. $327,178.60 to address construction-related change orders. That modification only required the mayor's approval because it was less than 10% of the project cost. Separate but related, we did get word from Skagit County Council of Governments that the redistributed funds for our region, we were granted $432,500 for this project's overruns. So that, that does help us out quite a bit with this, but that is the extent of my presentation.
Questions for Mr. Ram?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Thank you for your work on this project. I see nothing particularly wrong with this contract amendment, but I did vote against this project, so I'll vote against this amendment too, just for consistency.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
I appreciated all the detail that was provided. I understood very little of it, but it appears to me that everyone did their due diligence and all these things were necessary and I think the project has been a success. Anyway, I move that city council authorize the mayor to sign a modification to Contract 20127 TRN 004 with SRV construction in the amount of $385,320.55, increasing the total contract price to $5,037,333.15.
I've got this, Ms., just kidding, Ms. Hubick, a second.
Okay. Got a motion by Ms. Moulton and a second by Mr. Young to approve the contract modification as presented. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciak.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Fantini.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
No.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, 7F, Ordinance 4083, Amending Anacortes Municipal Code, Chapter 10.12 and 10.18. Mr. Rayum.
Thank you, Mayor. Before you is the second read of Ordinance 4083. This is an ordinance relating to addressing parking and traffic concerns raised by the, raised to the city by the community. During the first read on August 8th, 2024, staff recommended changing Flounder Bay Lane to a one-way street. However, the one-way road designations are codified in Chapter 10.12. For that reason, the second read now does include in the ordinance modifications to Chapter 10.12. And I do have a map of Flounder Bay Lane, just for fun. And I have the whole council.
I believe you had a map of all of these changes.
I do, yeah. We will just motor down to the bottom here, but if you had any questions about the other code modifications that we discussed at the first read, do let me know.
Questions for Mr. Rayum?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubick.
Thank you so much for taking the time to stick with us tonight and I would like to authorize the mayor to sign the ordinance number 4083 to change Anacortes Municipal Code, Chapter 10.12 and 10.18 as presented.
Motion by Ms. Hubick, second by Mr. Walters to approve Ordinance 4083. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciak, vote please.
Mr. Fantini.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, 7G, Noise Variance, Wastewater Treatment Plant Outfall Relocation. Discussion, possible action, and it's open for public comment. Mr. Rayum.
Thank you, Mayor. Staff are requesting a noise variance for the wastewater treatment plant outfall project as contemplated in Municipal Code 1969020. The variance is to allow the city contractor to make noise outside of regular work hours during the month of August. We are requesting this variance for an entire month to make sure we don't have a last-minute council action required when we are down to the time in which we need to sink the 1,075-foot, 42-inch outfall pipe. The project is targeted for a neap tide to sink the pipe and I said, what's a neap tide? And so a neap tide is when you have the least amount of difference between the high and the low tide, so it's an excellent time to try to sink a gigantic pipe into Gwenaus Channel. There also might be some other dredging things that may come up. There might be boulders in the way where this pipe needs to go and that will obviously take more time than we thought if we were just dredging sediment from the bottom of the channel. We do understand that this is a residential area and this does not give a carte blanche check to the, not check, but go-ahead for the contractor to work day and night through the month of August. We are still in control of whether or not the work will occur outside of regular business hours. So I just want to make sure that was clear, but it is for the whole month just in case we run into unforeseen consequence, or unforeseen complications to the project.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I think this variance makes sense for all the reasons Mr. Rayum just articulated. I would note, however, we don't have a resolution authorizing the noise variance in front of us and while we can take action by motion, I did spend a bunch of time today looking up in the minutes what we did on the cinema lease. Not we, but a different council 24 years ago and it would have been great if all of that had been done by resolution instead of simply by motion. So I move, oh, and the other thing is that we have to make specific findings under the WAC as noted in the item summary. So I move that city council find that immediate compliance with our noise limitations cannot be achieved because of special circumstances, rendering immediate compliance unreasonable in light of economic or physical factors and thus authorizing intertidal dredging, excavation, pipe submerging and backfilling activities on the wastewater treatment plant outfall relocation project as required from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM on August 1 through August 28.
Okay, I'm, I'm not sure I got all of that, but I, I have the, the gist of it is a motion by Mr. Walters and a second by Ms. Hubick to authorize, not a waiver of the WAC, that's not the right word, variance of the WAC from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM following, between August 1 through August 28. Additional discussion? Mr., Ms. Hubick.
I do just have one quick question. If constituents message us with concerns, who do we send them to other than to this?
You're welcome to send them to me.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Franciak?
I'm sorry, who's seconded?
Yeah, Ms. Hubick. Oh, Mr. Walters was second or Ms. Hubick was second? I can't remember. Okay, Ms. Hubick was second.
Thank you. Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Fantini.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and just to dispel any rumors, the pipe is being assembled on the current MJB property and I know Mr. Rayum will let us know on the date of the big sinking, the big pipe placement, I guess is a better way of saying that.
We should get bleachers. It'll be something you'll never see again in your lifetime. But you can see the outfall pipe from public property, on MG's property is going right out into the channel, or I'm sorry, into Fidalgo Bay right now, so.
And I did neglect to ask members of the public if they want to weigh in. Obviously, council already voted on it, but you can tell us that, okay. Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Just after what Ms. Hubick said, will you try to do an announcement about what night it's going to happen once it gets closer so that the neighborhood is not confused and calling?
Yeah, I was planning to do an update on the whole project to the council, but especially once we have the neap tide, like we kind of know a little more about when it's really going to go down. I plan to come.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yes, what I remember from my Navy days, you can actually predict neap tides and I think it'll depend on how much, where, how, where the project is in its maturity of where, when we're going to have to maybe use some of the night, some of these after-hours work. So there'll be a slight chance of predicting that or a decent chance of predicting it.
We're hoping it doesn't need to.
Yeah, right. That's the, that's the hope. Yep.
Okay, thank you, and we're on to 7H, Contract Award, 2024 Asphalt Overlay Project. Mr. Rayum, discussion, possible action.
The last agenda item. Before you use a contract with Lakeside Industries Incorporated in the amount of $1,027,080 to perform asphalt overlays on Kingsway, Fidalgo Avenue, Hillcrest Drive and Whistle Lake Road. And I do have the maps of the actual overlays. We do do these little pieces too, just so you know at the intersections. So this is, on the screen is Kingsway, it's a big one. This one is the, not labeled what it is. That's interesting. Isn't that?
Kingsway and you have Fidalgo and Hillcrest.
Okay. I think this is, sorry, I'm still new to town, but I believe this is Hillcrest Drive.
Yes, sorry, that's it.
Up there, it's really small. Okay, nice, yeah. And I just skipped over, there's just the two. That's great. I think they're all in your packet though. Did you, it was the maps on the packet. Okay. One other thing is to mention is that we are still on, focusing on the target of $1.8 million per year of overlays. Obviously, this contract is not $1.8 million. We are identifying additional streets. We have a PCI rating booklet that says which streets need to be overlaid this year, the last couple of years. So we are trying to build up another $500,000 of overlays while we have Lakeside in town. Once we do know which of those streets that we're going to do, I was planning on emailing council just so you're aware of, people are calling, why are my street getting overlaid? Usually it's a good thing, but some people will be concerned when they see us show up and they didn't know. So we do plan on coming back when we know. We thought this amount of overlay would cost $1.8 million, but we were very happy that it was less and so now we're going to do more overlay than we anticipated.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Rayum?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
And this is actual asphalt overlay.
And this is actual asphalt overlay, not the chip seal, right?
We are not planning to do any slither of your chip seal this year based on public feedback and just overlaying.
Cool. Exciting. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Walters.
Did somebody already make a motion?
No.
I moved to approve.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Walters and a second by Ms. Hubick to approve the contract with Lakeside as presented. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciak.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Fantini.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Motion carries.
No further action before the council adjourns tonight's meeting. Thank you very much.